City County School Board, and I'd like to call the meeting to order now, and we will take the roll. Ms. Robinson?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Ms. Huntley?
Here.
Ms. Ordigo?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Dowd?
Here. And we're going to skip down to item 3.2, with the meeting being reconvened, and we're going to ask the board member to certify closed session, please.
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such matters were, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. And Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Huntley?
Aye.
Ms. Ordigo?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowd?
Aye. And can I have a member approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Huntley?
Aye.
Ms. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mr. Dowd?
Aye. And with that, we'll move on to our announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Herron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carter Bird Baker, Cafeteria Manager, Aaron Tubbs, growing interest in hydroponics has sprouted learning and healthy food tasting opportunity for students at CBB. Ms. Tubbs applied for and received a grant through an organization called Let Us Grow. And I didn't make that one up. Let's listen in to learn more about the five-foot-tall vegetable tower called the farm stand at CBB.
They're growing.
The video doesn't seem to be available, unfortunately, not unless we can do something very quick, because it's definitely worth watching.
Do we typically put these videos on the website for the community to see?
We sure can. There'll be a link to it afterwards, if we can't pull it up literally in 20 seconds here. I hear the music.
Oh, that sounds interesting. There we go.
After that beautiful introduction of Let Us Grow, it just had to come on. There we go.
So the kids are actually seeing that food grows, and then they get to actually try it, too. So that really brings it full circle.
They say, when can I figure it? Can I help them? Are we going to eat it? My hope is that students can see things growing, and then be able to eat it and taste it after it's done. It's very important to me, but to eat healthy every day.
Yeah, I did taste some of those, and it was really good. I liked it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. That was sweet. Do any board members have a report to share?
UCBA started as my college project.
Just one second. I wasn't sure if any board members had a report to share. Ms. Young, and then Ms. Ordigo. Go ahead.
Okay, yes. I had the opportunity of attending the New Horizons Board meeting, and one of the things, I think the first thing that happened is, is all Mr. Kelly, who came to present the New Horizons, a check of $53,000 from their golf tournament.
Wow.
And then they continued to talk a little bit about the number of applications that they had this year at New Horizons. It was almost 2,000, and they only have capacity for 1,100. So they turned away quite a few students this year. I think currently, if I remember the number right, and Dr. Herron can correct me, I think we have about 124 of our students, that are maybe 130, something like that, that are attending New Horizons. But Mr. Roberts was asked, what about those who didn't get in? And he said that their plan is to work with the community businesses to see if they can enlarge the campus so that more students can participate. And I'm happy about that, because I think as students can see the different opportunities they have with careers, with trades, that there will be much more, many more students who will want to participate. So, Mr. Chair, that ends my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, Mrs. Huntley and I met, had our first, sorry, first meeting of the school year with the Student Advisory Committee a couple weeks ago. And it was great to meet a couple of the new faces, kids that just joined, and some were returning, so it was nice to see them again. We had a pretty, it was a great discussion. We had a fun icebreaker activity that, was it Mrs. Knight? Anyway, yeah, with different cards that were random pictures, and we had to pick one card that described what we thought the student advisory, you know, represented the Student Advisory Council and what we were supposed to do. And so it was just very, very interesting to see what each student picked and why. And it was a very talkative group, and so that's always nice. It wasn't hard to have a conversation. We did discuss the tier time change quite length. But yeah, it was great to meet them, and good meeting.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any other reports? Okay. We'll move on to 5-1, public comment. I think, Dr. Beers, do you have any?
We have no.
No public comment today? All right. Thank you, Dr. Beers. Moving on to item 6, information discussion item, strategic plan update, Goal 5 for fiscal year 2223. Dr. Herron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Annually, at this time of year, Mr. Baker brings us an update on recruitment and compensation comparisons for this school year, and Mr. Baker will do that right now. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the School Board, and Dr. Herron. Tonight is an update of Goal 5 of the Strategic Plan. As part of Goal 5, we want to recruit high-quality staff and retain the division's exemplary workforce by creating an environment where transparency and trust are the norm. Tonight, I'll be focusing on the strategies of recruitment and compensation. As part of Goal 5, we have a strategy to strengthen recruitment, to attract highly qualified and diverse applicant pools. Specifically, our primary aim is to be fully staffed on the first day of school. We continue to face historic challenges due to COVID-19 and a drop in the teacher preparation programs, but in spite of that, we've had some success. On the first day of school this year, we were 99.6% staff for classroom teachers, and we continue to hire minority teachers and counselors. An ongoing focus is to have our teacher workforce more closely mirror our student population. Last year, we analyzed the hiring trends over a five-year period, and we developed a staffing plan where we use this data to determine the number of early offers we would make. For this year, we had 26 candidates accept early offer teaching assignments for this fall, and we had offered 37. We also hired 128 instructional staff before the end of May. It is important to begin the hiring process as soon as possible in order to get candidates committed to WJCC public schools. Further, for our current employees, we released contracts earlier and revised the intent process to better understand, get better information from our employees. We requested the principals to engage in stay interviews with staff that were uncertain, at the hope of retaining them. In addition to our ongoing recruitment efforts at historically black colleges and universities, I continue to be on the Virginia State College of Education Advisory Board. In fact, we're meeting tomorrow. Again, we want to increase WJCC's exposure and access to qualified candidates of color. This year, we will also bring a renewed focus on the teacher mentoring program with the addition of a supervisor of organizational development and equity. Other items regarding recruitment that we did this past year to make us successful were, we held a support employee job fair on January 28th, had 22 attendees. We had a job fair on March 4th that focused primarily on teachers with 138 attendees, and we offered early contracts at that job fair. We also attended 15 university job fairs, with six being historically black colleges and universities. We also had a Facebook ad campaign with over 25,000 people reached, and resulted in 489 unique clicks. And we also had an additional job fair on June 15th for any remaining openings. And for a blatant plug, we're actually going to have a job fair next Tuesday, November 8th, here in this building. So mainly for support positions. So we're always hiring. At the end of the recruiting season, we analyze our staff demographics compared to our students. Looking at the WJCC student population, it is approximately 45% students of color, while our teaching staff is 10% minority. We are doing better with principals and assistant principals currently at 26% minorities, while our support staff is almost 42% minorities. The second strategy of Goal 5 that we will discuss tonight is to focus on being the leader in the region in employee salaries. On this slide, we show last year's salary in the front row for our bachelor's entry level, and our current salary on the back row compared with our neighboring districts. For this past school year, our bachelor's degree entry level started at $47,080. For the current school year, our bachelor's degree entry level is at $50,000. As a result, WJCC is tied for second out of six for the bachelor's degree entry level, and we're within $1,000 of being first. This slide shows how we compare in different milestone years on the bachelor scale. Because of the 7% raise, our regional ranking improved by each and each of the milestone years. Also referenced on this slide are the number of teachers who receive longevity pay, which may help in retention. Again, on this slide, we show last year's salary on the front row, this is for our master's scale, and the current salary on the back row. For the master's entry level, we now rank third out of six, and this ranking is significant, because the majority of the teachers we hire have at least a master's. On this slide, we show how we rank on the master scale, at beginning of the scale, as well as different milestone years. Because of the 7% raise, this year we made up some ground in the milestone years. In order to continue to make progress in this area, we will need to have a larger overall raise than our competitors, and that will benefit all teachers. On this slide, we show the starting salary of our neighboring school divisions for their current bachelor's degree teachers on the left of each grouping, with the lighter shades, and then progress to the right with a 5% increase for those beginning teachers. For the WJCC scenario, we show with each increasing darker shade what our salary would become if we were 1% more, 2% more, or 3% more than our neighboring school divisions. For the current school year, our bachelor's degree entry level is $50,000. In this example, those teachers could possibly move up to $45,000, excuse me, $54,000. On this slide, we show the starting salary of our neighboring school divisions for the current master's teachers' scale on the left of each grouping with the lighter shades, and then progress to the right with a 5% increase for those beginning teachers. For the WJCC scenario, we show each increasing darker shade with what our salary would become if we were 1% more, 2% more, or 3% more than our neighboring school divisions. For the current school year, our master's degree entry level is $51,681. In this example, those teachers could move up to $55,815.
Can I interrupt, just while we're looking at this slide? So the blue, so the blue ones are 6%, 7%, and 8%? Is that correct?
Yes, if our neighbors give 5%.
So you're not showing us 5% then? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Correct. The lightest blue shade for the scenario with us is 6%. It's 1% more than our neighbors.
Okay. Thank you.
We've made progress, but we believe the market for the teachers will be even more competitive next year. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Baker? Questions? Yes, Ms. Young?
Mr. Baker, thank you very much for the presentation. I do have a question. Why have we fallen so far behind with our teachers that have been with us longer? I mean, ranking six? I mean, what are we doing that's causing that?
I think it's a combination of what we've done or not done. I think we've made a little bit of progress since we had an overall 7% raise this past year, until we closed the gap somewhat. But we were not as far behind this year as we were in the past years. So I think...
I think it was interesting, in one of the surveys that was sent out, one of the key questions was asking teachers why they were leaving WJCC, and Mr. Baker may have some potential thoughts on that with regard to salary, which we really looked at that very closely, looking at the five, 10, and 15 years, because we don't want to lose experienced teachers, and beyond that, of course, as well.
Sure. We analyzed the separations of all the teachers, and so I think at the end of the day, we had nine out of the 148 teachers who specifically said they left for more money for a neighboring district. So that's 6% of our teachers who separated, specifically for more money. The number-one reason people separated was retirement. The number-two reason was relocation.
Right. No, I understand that. Okay, because I personally think that, I mean, I know that we focus a lot on our incoming teachers, our new hires, but I think maybe this year, I would really, personally, I will certainly be looking at those middle levels, because teacher retention is going to become more and more critical, I think, as the teacher shortage grows. So, okay, so I think that's a good heads-up for us as a school board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Young, if I could just add to that, if I may, Mr. Chair, when we look at our hiring last year, both become really important. Mr. Baker, in terms of the new teachers we brought in, how many were brand-new teachers?
Like 40 of the teachers were with zero years experience.
And that was out of?
160 teachers.
60%, is what I thought. So it's a fairly significant, so you can't let go of that beginning salary. That's going to drive the new people here, and make us the place to be, which is really, really important. But we also, you're absolutely right, have to look at throughout the whole system.
I have another question. Dr. Herron, when we're talking about 40 out of 160 teachers, only they were new teachers, right? The other 120 apparently were from, how many years, I mean, how many years do we give teachers if they come from another school division?
We always give year-for-year experience.
Every year of experience?
Yes, ma'am.
No, that's, I think that's excellent, because, I mean, I know when I was looking for jobs, that was important to me.
And that's a key, important fact for any teacher that's going to move into our system. You want to value every year of experience that they're bringing to us. Very, very important.
So we have a lot of questions coming around. So Ms. Huntley, then Ms. Cook?
I have more of a statement. I know we've talked in the past about when going out to recruit teachers of color at the other schools to take some teachers from Norfolk State or Virginia State, Virginia Union. We do have staff here that would love to go and talk, and I think definitely teachers are the best recruiters of teachers. Or even with the job fair, if we could, I don't know, I'm sure they're doing the day, if some, maybe some of the teachers knew, could just come and be available to answer any questions from teachers that may be from there. So I know that some have always asked, could they? And I know it's hard, because you don't want to take them out of the classroom, but it's very important, if it's that important, you know, definitely, that's a big piece, is to be able to talk to someone.
At the job fair, we hosted, we actually had teachers there that were the hosts and the greeters. A lot of them were actually working on their admin licensure. We had several teachers there.
Okay.
And we also, when recruiting and going out to different universities, I do believe we take graduates.
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Ordigo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, Mr. Baker, so you said 6% of the teachers who left said it was because of salary?
Yes, ma'am.
So what, how many people is that?
That was nine.
Nine people? Okay, thank you. And then, these bar graphs are awesome, but just in terms of, just in terms of looking at it with fresh eyes and not living it like you live it, I think for me, it would be good to see 5%, 6%, 7%, 8%. Like, the one that was confusing to me, and so I think if it's confusing to us, and we kind of see similar reports every year, it might be, so it'd be good, I think, to just maybe simplify that. And then with regard to race and ethnicity of our staff, as it pertains, you know, as compared to the race and ethnicity of our students, that's a really great snapshot, but it doesn't tell us where we're trending. So in other words, to make policy decisions and shift, if we're gaining ground, that's helpful to know. Or if there's been an explosion of people, of students of color in the last three years, it might take a couple years to catch up, right? Or, and so, I don't know, and I know you give us a report on a net gain or loss every year, and I appreciate that, too, but again, that's a snapshot in time, but when you're trying to look at it from a policy perspective, a budgeting perspective, a what-if-anything-we-can-do-about-it perspective, it's helpful to see how we're trending. So that would be great to know. And then also, on the same vein, I'd love the grow-your-own, whether it's from high school to teaching, or from, you know, TAs or subs to teachers, and helping people along that sort of professional development continuum and credentialing continuum. I take Ms. Huntley's point, and I agree with it absolutely, but I think some people who already know and love our community, it might be easier to get them to stay here than trying to, you know, recruit. I think it's a both-and situation, so, you know, please continue to double down on that. And then the discrepancy in where we rank, depending on how long a teacher's been there, you know, 10 years in, 15 years in, is that a function of the number of steps on our scale? Because looking around, it seems like we have a Because looking around, it seems like we have a lot of steps on our scale compared to other divisions. So is that a function of that?
I don't believe it's, we do have more steps than most school divisions. We go up to 40, most don't. So that doesn't necessarily equate to that. I think our scale's more evenly structured versus some other school divisions have plateaus, or they go up in greater amounts at different levels than ours, too.
Okay, so it's, so the, the discrepancies or the drops or differences we're seeing along isn't a function of our scale versus their scales?
Not in terms of having more steps in the scale. No, ma'am.
So because, so they, so they, because my, my understanding was that they're, because they have fewer, other divisions have fewer steps, those teachers are getting accelerated or increased salaries at an accelerated rate earlier in their careers, and then it plateaus off where we have more incremental steps on the front end, but then you continue to keep going up.
I think it's a little more complex than that, because some other school divisions.
Got everything I just said.
No, 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 it's a good thought.
Okay, thank you. Just always trying to understand, eight years in, I still don't get it. And then also, I just think, I mean, I know you show us this to plan, so I guess it would be helpful to hear what everybody thinks, but I think we need to continue to gain ground. And I know that last year, I, for good or ill, used the word bold. Sometimes I regretted that, sometimes I was proud of that. But, and we were talking early on last year about 10%. And, you know, we really came back from that, particularly, I think, looking down the line about sustainability and wanting to make sure we could sustain that. At least my thinking at the time was do 7%, and then you could see where the economy is a year from now, and see if the division could sustain another significant jump. Then, then, you know, I think that's something to look at seriously, so that we can continue to make ground across the whole scale, so that we're not losing teachers after they've been in, you know, five years. So we've trained them up good, and then our gift to our neighboring divisions is they get a great teacher, right? And then they might come back again in, you know, 20, 25 years, but anyway, so if we could retain, Mrs. Young's point, if we could just keep people that are good.
Right.
Yeah, that'd be good. So anyway, I, I'm in favor of understanding the budgetary impact of, I mean, I know it's a million dollars a percent roughly, right? But.
I believe it's now a little bit over that. Ms. Yuen, I'm sure has that figure right in her head right now.
Probably about 1.2, 1.3, 1.3 million per percent. Okay, so, but I like the darker blue. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Cook, Ms. Ordigo, and then Dr. Beers.
Yeah, thank you. Is the, is the fact that our mid-range salaries are the lowest comparatively speaking, is that a function of the fact that we are, is it correlated to the fact that we start off higher?
Not necessarily. I think when you, a lot of the school divisions' pay scales are all very different in terms of how much they increase or in-between steps and stuff. So I think they're all very unique.
So I'm just trying to understand, I'm not suggesting that we start new teachers lower, but if we did, would our, would our mid-range salaries then rank higher because the increase was, I guess, I'll just ask my next question, which, what is, how far off are we in those five, 10, 15, 20-year ranges? Because we see the comparison for the first years for both bachelors and masters, that we don't see, I mean, is it $500 difference, but it still puts us at number six? Or is it $5,000? I mean.
It ranges more in the, like, 3% to, like, 6% difference to get us up to that average.
We can provide that for you.
That gets you the exact dollar figure to get us up to that.
It would be helpful to see in some way, similar comparison at those, at those different milestones, and why, you know, why we're six, and how far off we are from, from neighboring divisions. And then, I guess, yeah, then I guess the, my first question was if, if we started, if we started lower, would we rank higher because our increase would be comparatively higher to the starting salary? That affect it?
I think in the years past, we, we had some compression at the bottom of our scale. I think we've released that compression where teachers didn't all get, you know, at the steps zero, one, two, and three, they were all stagnated there. And so we've, we've released that. I don't know, I don't believe that's necessarily why that affects us in years 10, 15, and 20.
I think one of the key things, we're, we're trying to, to look at every piece of the scale, both entry level, because that's where our new teachers are coming from and bringing that fresh, those fresh new ideas into our organization, and, and hopefully will be with us for a long time. And, and then, of course, keeping our experienced teachers. And so all of it is extremely important this year. This is the first year we were not 100% staffed in this organization with teachers in the classroom on day one. We came very, very close and probably did so much better than, than other school divisions. But whatever we do this year is going to really drive that again in the incoming year.
Do you have another one?
Can I add one more question? Do we know, on average, what, like, if there was a bell curve from, from entry level to, you know, retirement, where the highest attrition rate occurs, at what year?
I can get that for you.
Or what, yeah, which milestone area?
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Dr. Beers?
I actually have three questions. I think I knew the answer, but I, I think it's worth saying. Over the years, we've added steps, haven't we?
Yes, sir.
Why, why, just so people understand, why do we do that?
At the.
Yeah, why do we add steps?
It allows us at the top of the scale.
Yeah.
So those folks.
It goes up higher.
So they would still get the step increase?
That's a reason, yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. The other, the other, two other questions. One of them, one of them is I'm looking at WJCC, Newport News in Hampton. What I'd like to know, and we probably can't get this without, I don't know, it'd be great to know, is, was Hampton and Newport News, were they fully staffed at the beginning of the school year? And if they weren't, how many, how many slots did they have left? Do we know that?
From talking to my peers, I don't know the number of, how many there are. I believe, like Dr. Heron said, we were the only one that was.
Only, the only reason, I'm curious about it, because I know we were, I think, six short at the beginning.
Correct.
And I see where our salaries are. And I really wish, I'd like to know, where was Hampton? They have higher salaries, so did Newport News? Did they, were they only missing six teachers at the beginning of the year? More, right?
No, sir, much more, much, many, many more.
I don't think that, I think that's important information to keep in mind. It's, I understand you, I understand the value and the importance of raising the salaries. They've raised salaries, and I, part of it is, I know salaries are important. I think there are other things that also encourage people to teach in the Williamsburg, James City County School System. The other thing, I don't know, what's the attrition rate at Newport News and Hampton? How many did they lose at the end of the year, last year? And how many did Newport News lose at the, at the end of the year? I'm curious, and those might be hard numbers to get, because nobody wants to admit, yeah, I don't get it, we, we gave them these huge, you know, they have great salaries, and we're down 18%. What's, what's the deal? What's going, because there are other things, there are other things. But, and I certainly don't want to dismiss the importance of continuing to raise those salaries. It's not that at all, but I just, and I, I'm even curious about York. Was York County fully staffed when they started in the fall? Of course, York has more money to do stuff. And that's what's so curious, so does Hampton and Newport News. They have a lot more federal funds that they, that they, that, that they can use, but I would, I'm, I'm curious about that. And it, I know it's almost a rhetorical question, because we may not be able to get the answer, but.
It, it might be a rhetorical question. It was the only question that I had on my, on my sheet as well, so I, I give a question as something that I'd be interested in knowing. If we, the information were available to us, for all the same reasons that Dr. Beers laid out for us, I'd, I'd be interested to know, too. I think I have a few members that want to circle back around, so Ms. Hunley, then Ms. Young. Ms. Hunley and Ms. Young.
And I may have missed this. Usually when, when we have job fairs, do we get a report that kind of says this is, how many people came to the table? This is how many we hired? This, do, do, do I get that? I can't remember. Is that a school board question I should submit? So I'd like to know, like, if you go to, to Norfolk State, who went? I'd like to know who went, and what was the result? How many people came to the table? How many? Is that something I can get or not?
That's probably something that maybe the board can discuss at a retreat to, to kind of identify things that we'd like the superintendent to share with the board, but that's something we can discuss.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Ms. Young?
Yes, I, I just have a question. Are we, when we give a 7% raise, does every teacher on that scale get a 7% raise?
Yes, ma'am. The way we did it this past year, everybody got a 7%. Or even the people at the top of the scale, if they were pushing up against the top of the scale, they received it like, as like a stipend, so they all got 7%.
I mean, okay, so you gave a 7% stipend?
If they, hypothetically, if they were, you know, at the top of the scale, and they were $500 over the scale, because 7% put them over, we would make up the difference to get them the full 7%.
Why wouldn't we just increase the, the scale?
That's why we have so many steps in our scale.
Most, most school divisions stop at 30, and we have 40.
So 41 would make a difference?
At, at some point, we would most likely need to not add another step.
But everybody got 7% overall?
Okay, because for me, I think that's critical in job retention. If I were, I mean, I use this example often, having been on a scale where I was frozen for three years, that is not a funny, I mean, you're doing the same job, and I don't want any of our teachers to be in that position, ever, so.
As we consider, you know, as we start January and talking about this in more detail, is there any sense with the board now of where you want to be in terms of, of salary raises? I know 5% is, is probably where we would think I'd start the conversation, because that's what the General Assembly has provided for us. I didn't know if the board wanted to talk about that a little bit more this evening, or we're, or we're ready to or not.
Ms. Young, you look like you're ready.
I'm not afraid to say this, but the military, Social Security, got 8.8% this year. Federal employees that belong to the federal employee system got 7.7. Personally, I don't think we can go less than that. I mean, inflation rate is 8.3 or 8 points, somewhere in that range. And for our teachers to even maintain their current, I mean, they're probably below at the point, but to maintain a standard of living, we have to at least do what, I mean, it's called, usually called a cost-of-living raise, but it's not fair to them to have them living below that, in my opinion.
That 8.3 you referenced and 7.7 you referenced, that's within the same fiscal year that we did our 7%. Is that correct?
Yes, because I'm expecting those raises in January, so, I mean, I'm already receiving information about it, so I'm expecting this, what's going to happen across the board for federal employees and those that are on Social Security is going to be 8.8%. I've seen the charts.
Anyone else? Ms. Ordigo?
Are we, are, are we going to identify other areas in the budget that we would cut from in order to do this?
We would be requesting more money from our funding partners if we were to raise it above the, the 5%.
And not at the tune of 1.1 million, but 1.3, nearly 3 million, right? Per percentage?
Per percent.
Per percentage, right.
Five, six, seven million.
Ms. Hunley?
Along the lines of what Dr. Beers was saying, when we are talking about increases, also just the quality of life of our teachers? And if this means, you know, and I think when you talk about turnover, Mr. Baker, and why certain teachers are leaving, and you talk about higher salaries being paid in Hampton and Newport News, what is it that's causing the, the teachers to leave despite getting paid more money? And is there a way to make our teachers' lives easier, as, just their day-to-day lives easier, whether it's scheduling, whether it's the planning periods, whether it's the calendar, the number of teaching days? I know we have to have teaching days 180, but then, just like, when we're doing the calendar, what is, what makes a teacher's life, a happier life outside of just the salary?
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Ms. Hunley?
And I'm still, still with being bold. I mean, I say still 10%. Every time we shoot high, we never, I mean, it's never high enough, and so I'm pushing out the 10.
Dr. Beers?
I, I'm trying to think, it was, I've, I've lost it now, so.
It'll come back to you. It'll come back to you. And when you're asleep tonight.
It's back, I know what it was. Just, Mr. Baker, just one more quick question. There's no, there's no way of knowing how much Hampton, Newport News, what their raises are going to be. So, and we're, we're, you know, we're looking at what 5% would do. Well, they're not, I don't think they're going to just sit quietly and say, well, we're just going to do 3%. I'm sure they're gonna, they're, they're gonna keep, they're gonna do that, but that, we don't know that for sure.
Correct. We don't, we do not.
That's all, yeah.
I don't know if we've heard from everybody, maybe we have, everybody that wants to speak on this has. I would just say that for me, it's a little early to jump out there and say, let's, let's hit it hard this time, though I would like to. I think everybody around these, in this room would love to be able to do that. But there are other, many other needs that our division needs to address and be aware of before we commit ourselves this early to, to something very grand for our faculty and staff. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, the only other thing that I, I thought about was, I, I know that more and more businesses, as a result of pandemic and people working at home, there's, there's a lot more serious talk about four-day work weeks. And to your point, I know it seems, it's pretty radical to say, hey, you only teach for four days a week, but it's, it's, you know, it's possible, but you might think about that. We'll see, I don't know.
Nothing's off the table. All right. Well, we're going to move on to item 62, our fiscal year 23 10-year enrollment projection update. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're very pleased this evening to have Ms. Healy from Future Think to present our enrollment projections for the next number of years. And Ms. Healy, are you with us this evening already? Can you hear us? I think we're just on the transition to, to Zoom.
Can you hear me?
I'm Ms. Healy.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks for being with us this evening.
Thank you for having me. My pleasure, I'm going to share my screen with, so if someone can enable the participant screen sharing, so I can share the presentation. Right now, I'm getting that message that the host disabled participant screen sharing.
If you go to the green button.
Try again now?
Okay, try it again. Perfect, thank you. Okay, try it again. Perfect. Thank you. Are you able to see the presentation?
Yep. Ma'am.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you so much for having me um tonight. It's my pleasure to talk a little bit about the enrollment projections and just really give an overview of you know, the status of enrollment and where we're headed. Um, just a little bit as a reminder about me, um, the president of Future Think, I've been working with um William Williamsburg James County Schools for over twenty years now. Uh, so it's really been my pleasure to continue to serve you, because I work with other districts across the country as well. So thanks for having me back. Start off here with the historical enrollment and what we've seen, you know, kind of over the past ten years. Been an increase of three hundred and ten students. So some small growth, but we've really seen an uptick um since the twenty twenty twenty-one dip during um the height of the pandemic, when enrollment dropped down to um under eleven thousand students. So since then, we're, you know, back up to eleven thousand three hundred and eights as um as of September thirty of this year. So again, we're, you know, kind of back back in the um movement up. Can see though, really, the peak was in the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen year. We saw a little bit, you know, kind of a stabilization. As I mentioned, the drop during the height of the pandemic and then upticks last year as well as this year. Um, in terms of looking at the enrollment by grade group, you can see the first line here right around five thousand students is the K-five total. So again, they experienced the greatest dip um during twenty twenty twenty-one. The gray line is the middle school enrollment, which really pretty much held steady. We saw a slight dip, but not near near the um decrease that we saw at the elementary level. And then again, at the high school, very, you know, kind of pretty steady state, just under four thousand students. In terms of looking at the projections that we did last year versus this year's enrollment, the enrollment came in the much higher than what we expected. Last year, we projected that um enrollment at the high level would be eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-six students. So I mentioned enrollment came in at eleven three oh eight, so a difference of a hundred and forty-two students or about one percent. Last year, we had recommended um using the moderate projection for, you know, planning purposes. However, our high projection was lower than what was projected. We look at the most likely, obviously, the the difference gets a little bit bit bigger. We were two hundred and ten students um too low based on that most likely projection or just under two percent um difference. And you can see most of the, you know, kind of across the board, you know, first grade for the most part was the highest, and then for some reason, twelfth grade. So there were some stu-, we had, you know, an increase of students at the twelfth grade level based on um eleven, you know, what we saw previously in eleventh grade. So that was kind of interesting. When we look at it based on the schools, and this is the high projection that we're looking at. So if we look at for each of the schools, the biggest difference was at Lafayette High School, where there were seventy-four more students than what we projected at the high level. And that's kind of where that fifty came in of those twelfth graders. And then next, Laurel Lane, again, came in sixty students over what was projected. Um, and then we took a look at uh Ntoka Elementary was forty-four students under what we projected. And then War Hill High School was thirty-two under. So the rest were all within a classroom size. But I just wanted to point that out by school, you know, kind of where those fell as well. Um, in terms of the projection methodologies that we use, just kind of as a review, look at the cohort survival method, which measures really how many students are moving grade to grade, year to year across across the board. And then we also look at then developing a ratio based on what's happened historically to estimate future enrollment projections. Additionally, because we're continuing to see new housing development in the division, we want to look at how many building permits are issued in a given year and then evaluate how many students we're seeing coming in kind of the following year. We use a one-year lag. So if we look at, you know, the number of um single-family building permits that were issued in two thousand twenty-one with expectation that we would see those students coming into the district or into the division twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. So kind of just like, okay, once a building permit's issued, it's gonna take about a year or so for us to see students in the in the division as a result of that. So we really kind of combine these two methods to give us the um enrollment projections that we'll take a look at. We have four um projection models. We use um the most likely and the low, a moderate and a high. So we have those four. We break them all out also by school, by grade. So we have, you know, kind of an extensive set of of projections from that standpoint. First projection is really the most likely projection, and this is what I would recommend using um for planning purposes. I mentioned last year, we recommended the low, um, or I'm sorry, the moderate. And since we came in higher than the high last year, I've got it would probably be best to use that most likely projection as the recommended. This shows an increase of um over a thirteen thousand students total in the twenty thirty-two, thirty-three school year. So an increase of about eighteen hundred and fifty-five students over that time period. Looking from kindergarten, fifth grade of, you know, next year of just under five thousand over fifty-five hundred in in that ten-year period. Middle school moving from under twenty-seven hundred to just um under thirty-two hundred during that time. And then high school moving from thirty-eight forty over to forty-four thirty. So again, increases, you know, kind of across the board as we look at that. The low projection really shows us kind of a flat um projection, an increase of about two hundred and fif- or two hundred and seventy students over that ten-year period overall, and some increases at the middle and or I'm sorry, the elementary and the middle school levels, and then a slight decline at the high school level. So that is the low. So it would be about um just under eleven thousand five hundred students over the ten-year period. The moderate projection um shows growth up to twelve thousand five hundred and sixty-three students. So about twelve hundred, um, just a little under twelve hundred students over that ten-year period. Again, increases across the board as as shown in that most likely production. So seeing, you know, increases at each of the um grade bands. Then the high projection shows us going to thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight. So again, the most likely falls in between the moderate and the high projection. Again, we're seeing um projected increases with the high to just under fifty-seven hundred students at the elementary level, just under thirty-four hundred students at the middle, and um about forty-seven hundred students at the high school level. So that is kind of the quick and dirty overview of the um enrollment projection. You know that you've been given the full um report, and I'm happy to answer, you know, any questions as we take a look at you know, any any of the other data points not included, or certainly, you know, what we talked about here as well. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Ms. Healy, I think we're gonna ask Ms. Humble to lead us off.
Hi, thank you, Ms. Healy, for this information. Um, I know you have heard this before because you've worked with our school system for a long time, but in your model with um home, the building permits, and you know this is a big area for retirement, and we have restricted uh age communities. When you were creating your models, did you did you take that into consideration?
Yes, we did. And um part of um the report that I didn't talk about tonight, but on page seventeen of the report, we also look at overall um population data that gives us some indication of what what's happening in terms of the age demographic within the division. So we look at the overall total population, and then we um and this is from data that we actually purchased from ISRI. They do their own five-year projection. So we look at what their five-year projection is, again, based on overall population within the division. So it would include, um, you know, students who attend private or parochial or homeschooled or whatever in those numbers when we look at it from the age five to eighteen population. But we also have um that data for the older ages, and then what's, you know, kind of projected to happen as people tend, you know, to age within the district. So that um so that is a piece of data that we do look at as well. Um, and then certainly the home um home building also plays a role in terms of how how that's gonna impact our enrollment as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you. Um, so I want to build on what Ms. Humble suggested and and because sometimes um when citizens read your report, particularly as you project growth uh in student population for uh from a geographic perspective uh at the neighborhood level, can you talk about um the, I I guess I've learned from you over the years that you your work is more accurate at the division level than it is at the block level, if you will. So when people are looking at the neighborhood level, it might be, there might be more variations in your accuracy. So can you talk about sort of sub-sub-county and neighborhood uh projections? And maybe that people reading that may not want to read too much into that and look at more of the macro, not the micro level. Could you speak to that, please?
Sure. Um, certainly, anytime in looking at um a projection, the larger the group, the more accurate it's going to be. So looking at the division-wide projection, you know, that's taking into account everything that's happening in the division as a whole. Versus when we're looking at the, you know, elementary schools or, you know, you know, we're looking at a much smaller population. So the variation just in the, you know, statistics of it are, you know, kind of vary widely. So, you know, for example, if one school has an unusually high kindergarten enrollment one year, that's gonna throw off the projection, you know, considerably at the neighborhood level. But when we're looking at the overall population, you know, um, division-wide, that, you know, discrepancy, you know, is kind of, you know, it's blended in, so it's not as um a dramatic difference than what we would see within uh um smaller populations as we break it down. And certainly, as we go further out in the projection too, the expectation is, you know, closer in next year, couple even years out, will be more accurate than that eight to ten-year range out. Again, because of variables that can be anticipated.
So um so it's fair to say that i- if you're looking at this and you see uh what appears to be significant growth and what is an age, what appears to be an age-restricted um neighborhood, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. It doesn't, okay.
I I I think that's safe to say.
Thank you. And then I have a question about the cohort survival method methodology. It it was my observation over the last two years that because there was a significant and sudden drop in enrollment due to the pandemic, that the that the methodology kind of um that you used, there was a uh they were artificially low projections because the co- the denominator you were starting with was lower. Eventually, that is gonna smooth out. Um, do you think we're there yet, or do you think we're there next year or the year after? And what's your gut based on what you're seeing around the country?
I would say we're getting close, but I think we're probably gonna be there next year or maybe following. I think, you know, we're we're seeing that recovery. I don't think we're quite fully back. But I think we're really close. Yeah, and then looking at, you know, kind of the survival ratio, looking at twenty twenty and twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two school year, like those ratios are really kind of, you know, kind of threw out for planning purposes. Um, and I know we talked about this last year as well, but again, um, you know, so the projection ratios that we used did not include those two years. However, we're in, you know, moving the projections forward, those smaller class sizes are, you know, are with us for that for that period. So that, um, you know, did result in smaller projections than we had seen previously. And which is why, um, in part, I think, this this year recovered a little bit more than we anticipated.
Right.
Which is why the high projection was a little bit too low. So so I think we're there.
That makes sense. Um, and then just one observation, um, you know, we, this community has a disproportionately large percentage of older adults living here because that's a retirement population. But so one could assume that um that then we have a disproportionately low number of children, and that's not really true. My observation is that we we're kind of tracking with the Virginia State average and the percentage of uh school-aged children. So I just wanted to make that comment because um because our dearth is between eighteen and sixty-four, not between zero and eighteen. So we still need the schools. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Dr. Beers and then Ms. Ortego.
Uh, yeah, the the one of the other things that on uh I I I've looked at the the overall numbers by by grade level. But one of the reasons for also, and I and I I did, and I do appreciate that you did some projections with each of the individual schools. One of the things that we always have to grapple with is when we get to the point of enrollment where we're approaching ninety percent of the capacity of the school. Did you uh have you, um, do you try to, um, you obviously, you you probably know from each of our schools, if you if you look at our existing data, what that number is for each of our schools. Would you, could you apply that farther out as you as you look at each one of those schools or? Because it's like, right now, it it looks like the number I got is uh uh for pretty much every one, it's over five hundred over that ten-year period. And that's that's what I am curious about. That has uh an impact on whether we expand the school, whether we uh reduce the number of students in one school, go to another one. How does that, do you do you look at that at all?
I haven't um included capacity within um my study, that it hasn't been part of the purview. But um certainly, that, you know, is something that we could look at in terms of, you know, where, you know, kind of currently where we are in terms of capacity and where like the five and ten-year production would be. And I think that would would be a helpful exercise just to understand.
And they're really high.
You know, it's not growing equally across
Yeah, right now. Yeah, right now, our elementary schools are, it it's very high. And and we're in the process of trying to deal with that, but I'm just, I I'm just wondering, um, so you you could do something like that, if that, just to see how that.
Oh, absolutely.
Like, you know, it's teasing it out, I know, but just to see, um, you know, where where that growth is gonna be. You know, as we go farther down the road. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Ortego?
Yeah, I just have a a question about uh the charts that I'm seeing in here on the live birth count seem to stop right at twenty twenty. And I'm curious if the if the COVID shutdown months into years, do we know if it's produced a significant baby boom of any kind that we should be anticipating?
So far, um, no. Um, what we've seen, and unfortunately, we just had through, um, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find my birth count data, um, just take a look at. Twenty twenty-one wasn't yet available when um we did the report. But what I'm seeing in other parts of the country is that there's been a slight uptick in twenty twenty-one. Um, and that's true. Um, and that's true nationally as well. Um, but not anywhere near, you know, increases. We saw that, you know, fairly dramatic drop in twenty twenty and really just a very, you know, slight, not even probably worth mentioning. So, you know, it's kind of that, you know, there was a lot of um, discussion about whether that would be a baby boom when people are stuck at home for long periods of time. Um, but it really was the exact opposite effect. And I think that had to do with, you know, dealing with the pandemic that we had. And it's less different than dealing with the snowstorm or blackout or, you know, you know, where things are going. Um, but with, you know, kind of the health, you know, certainly health concerns as well as the economy and what what this all meant for our country. People weren't weren't having children as a result of being stuck in indoors for long periods of time. And um, it'll it'll be interesting to see what twenty twenty-two is as well, I think. It's just, you know, how how comfortable people feel. Are are we, you know, kind of back to the question you asked her um, about, you know, are we are we there yet in terms of, you know, recovery? Um, so I think, you know, the birth counts will help us determine that as well when we see twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Ms. Ortega, any other questions from board members before I ask mine? I, so Ms. Healy, I appreciate you being here with us this evening and always appreciate your thorough work and explanation of your work. Um, one explanation, I'm curious if you can offer, may, and maybe there's one or two others out there listening that would say, yeah, I don't get that either. Um, when you look at planning versus budget, and I think I saw in your report that you use or recommend low for planning. Is that right? And then most likely for budget, or maybe I've got it backwards, but.
Um, that's, no, that's traditionally what had been used was the low for budgeting. Um, and the most likely kind of for overall district or division planning. Um, but what I was recommending for this year in terms of, you know, kind of looking at the projections is using the most likely for um, for planning purposes.
So for me, if you can just explain why two different scenarios. If we look at um, the actual eleven thousand three hundred and eight, um, why why not just one scenario for both planning and budget? If you can help me understand that.
Um, actually, that is something that was from the um, from the division. Not something that I recommended. It was just how the division elected to use those numbers, so.
Yeah, I think.
I don't know if um,
I can certainly.
Dr. Heron can comment on that.
Yeah, I'll absolutely step in and Renee can keep me right as well. I think traditionally, the division has been very conservative in its budgeting and has used low projection. Um, up until the last couple of years, when we actually used actual numbers of students in seats to budget for the next year. So we've always taken that approach, but for several years, we used uh, for many years, we used most likely for planning. And then in two thousand eighteen, we we made a change.
Ms. Cook?
Yeah, just to, so, so it's low projections for operating budget planning for the next fiscal year. And then traditionally, most likely for facility planning and CIP.
Right.
But but a couple of years ago, in cooperation with our local governments, we switched to low um, because that was so spot-on for so many years. So so there's two, you use two, one for the next fiscal year operating budget, which is really important to be conservative and better to underestimate than overestimate because then you're caught with a budget gap. But then for facility planning, we um, used to use most likely, but pivoted to low uh, for years. That's, those are the two differences.
Yeah, understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I only took seven.
To everybody in the room, thank you. I appreciate. Uh, if there are no other questions for Ms. Healy, I really appreciate your your time this evening and uh, thank you to your staff as well.
My pleasure. And if anyone thinks of any questions, you know, after up on your guidebook tonight, please um, feel free to um, send an email, give me a call, I'll be to help.
Great, thank you so much. Have a great evening.
You too, thank you so much.
Okay. Um, any last questions for Dr. Heron before we move on to item seven? Just.
It's really just a statement. Um, uh, I I I take very seriously the um, recommendation to use most most likely for capital planning. Um, but I I believe because we have come to a joint agreement um, with the local governments, our funding partners on using low projections, I just don't think that's something that we can unilaterally proceed with. I just think it requires a conversation. I I um, it may indeed be the right thing to do. It may be the accurate thing to do. Um, that's out outside of my uh, uh, scope. But I just um, feel like at some point, we need to circle back through a joint meeting or liaison to make sure that the lines of communication are open on that particular topic because it has been an operating assumption for many years now. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. And to that point, we do have a joint meeting coming up on December second. It could be an opportunity for that discussion. Um, any any other thoughts on what Ms. Cook shares? Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Cook. We'll move on to item seven, uh, our proposed agenda, item seven-one, review presentation of the FY twenty-four through thirty-three, proposed CIP plan from our superintendent. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for the opportunity to present the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-four through thirty-three. This afternoon, Ms. Yuen will present not only the proposed plan, but provide context and background for the recommendation, including a review of the two thousand eighteen resolution, which we just talked about by the School Board, City Council, and Board of Supervisors regarding planning for future space. Also, we're going to talk a little bit about what our rationale is for using not most likely, but for moderate projections in our planning for another year. And we're going to have a detailed look at the numbers. Dr. Beers had mentioned um, what this means for us in terms of capacity. Ms. Yuen actually does that analysis and presents, will present part of that this evening about what these numbers mean in projection for each individual building and in particular for for elementary, middle, and high school. Prior to two thousand um, eighteen, the division did use uh, most likely enrollment for planning regularly. Due to slow growth in in two thousand eighteen, the division determined to use the low enrollment projections and used it for two years. For the last two years, however, we were in a very unusual situation with a drop in enrollment due to the pandemic. Based on guidance from Future Think, we use moderate projections predicting the return of students last year and this year. And as you heard this evening, in reality, for two years in a row, we have actually exceeded the high projections at all levels with the majority of the increase at the elementary level. All that being said, we are very excited about bouncing back to almost pre-pandemic enrollment. And but with that comes the need to plan thoughtfully for our future space needs as a school division. Currently, we have trailers at all elementary schools except Matoka, twelve in total, with Stonehouse having three trailers. That is six classrooms uh, over and also over hundred percent, hundred percent capacity. Currently, we have an RFP in process for the design of pre-K space with funds for design approved last year. Construction pending approval of funds will start next year in fiscal year twenty-four. The new two, two new pre-K centers combined will serve five hundred students, one hundred more than we are currently serving in our elementary schools, but will leave four hundred spaces in our current elementary schools. We're also in the design process for the renovation of the nine hundred building at Lafayette High School, which will provide additional space at the high school level. With additional classrooms at Lafayette, we will be just below ninety percent capacity at the high school level. Also, uh, for your reference this year, new items in the capital plan include bus, school bus replacements, safety and security enhancements, and storm drain repairs also. And with that very brief introduction, it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Yuen, Chief Financial Officer this evening, who will take us through the presentation that focuses mainly on fiscal year twenty twenty-four, our next funded year. Ms. Yuen?
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. As Dr. Heron shared, we'll be uh, reviewing the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty-four through thirty-three. The information presented this evening represents that of a working document that will evolve until the school board's approval in December and possibly even until the final adoption in May. The estimates for projects in the capital improvement plan include ten percent for architecture and engineering services, five percent for contingency, and the cost estimates within the five years have been adjusted by six percent due to the current volatile market. A new project may appear in the CIP for the first time due to new or updated information, for example, updated enrollment projections or projects needed for safety reasons. Sorry. Our funding partners adopt a five-year plan, but we develop a ten-year plan, which enables the division to project and plan for future needs beyond the five years and also gives our funding partners adequate time and opportunity to prepare and budget for capital projects. As funding is appropriated annually, tonight, our initial focus is on fiscal year twenty-four. We will review the changes for fiscal year twenty-four from the adopted fiscal year twenty-three five-year plan, and we will also review modifications to the current plan. We are currently having a facility condition review performed and do expect that the report will have an impact on the outer years of the plan and next year's CIP when the information is available to us. Ms. Healy recently shared our ten-year enrollment projections. And before we discuss the CIP plan, I want to share um, a comparison of our enrollment from last year and how it compares to our current year enrollment. Our September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one enrollment was eleven thousand eighteen. And based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of ten thousand eight hundred twenty-nine, eight hundred ninety-two, to a high of eleven thousand one sixty-six. We actually ended up over the high projection for this year at eleven thousand three oh eight, an overall increase of two hundred ninety students as compared to last year. The majority of the increased enrollment is at the elementary level, which was one hundred forty-eight students. In twenty eighteen, guidelines to address additional school capacity were established and agreed upon by the School Board, James City County Board of Supervisors, and Williamsburg City Council. These guidelines established that at eighty-five percent capacity an evaluation of needs and potential solutions would be developed, and at ninety percent, a recommendation for action would be presented. These guidelines were based on utilizing the low enrollment projection, but it was agreed that annually, it would be reviewed to determine if a more aggressive approach was necessary. Our enrollment is still recovering from the COVID nineteen pandemic and has been over the high projection now for two years in a row. So the information that we are presenting tonight will be based on the moderate projection. While Ms. Healy recommended earlier this evening, looking at the most likely for planning purposes, we are choosing to go with a more conservative method. We utilized the moderate projection the last two years for planning purposes and are continuing to do so this year. This chart shows a comparison of our high school enrollment. Our September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one enrollment was three thousand seven hundred eight. And based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of three thousand six hundred fifty to a high of three thousand seven hundred forty-one. We actually ended up over the high projection for this year at three thousand seven hundred seventy, an overall increase of sixty-two high school students as compared to last year. This table shows Future Think's moderate projected enrollment as it compares to the division's capacity for high schools. Lafayette is currently at ninety-two percent capacity or one thousand two hundred thirteen students and is projected to remain around ninety-three percent for the next ten years. Lafayette's enrollment increased by seventy-six students this year as compared to last year. Jamestown is currently over capacity at one thousand two hundred thirty-two students or a hundred and two percent and is projected to remain above one hundred percent through the next ten years. Warhill's current enrollment is one thousand three hundred twenty-five or ninety-two percent capacity and is projected to remain around ninety-two to ninety-five percent through the next ten years. Overall, high school capacity is currently at ninety-five percent for the current year and is expected to continue increasing each year. Currently, the design for the renovation at Lafayette is underway with construction funding expected in fiscal year twenty-four. The renovation at Lafayette will add an additional two hundred to two hundred and fifty seats of capacity, which will bring overall high school capacity down to around ninety percent. Due to the various programs that high school students have available to them, such as New Horizons and Governor's School, all students do not spend their entire day within the high schools. So we have placed the classroom expansions at Jamestown and Warhill in fiscal years twenty-nine and thirty, just outside of the five-year plan. We will continue reviewing this each year. This slide shows a comparison of our middle school enrollment. On September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, enrollment was two thousand five hundred eighty-five. And based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of two thousand five seventy-one to a high of two thousand six thirty-eight. We actually ended up over the high projection for middle school at two thousand six sixty-five, an overall increase of eighty middle school students as compared to last year. This table shows Future Think's moderate projected enrollment as it compares to the division's capacity for middle schools. Overall, middle school capacity is currently at eighty-five point two percent and will reach ninety percent in fiscal year twenty-nine. Based on the projected middle school enrollment reaching the ninety percent capacity overall where action needs to be taken, Phase Two of James Blair has been placed in the CIP plan in fiscal year thirty-two. While enrollment shows that we reached ninety percent capacity in fiscal year twenty-nine, a new central office will be needed prior to moving forward with Phase Two of James Blair. Currently, a new central office is in the CIP plan in fiscal year thirty and thirty-one. We will continue monitoring each year as updated enrollment information is available. This slide shows a comparison of our elementary school enrollment. On September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, enrollment was four thousand seven hundred twenty-five. And based on this, our projection for this school year ranged from a low of four thousand six seventy-one to a high of four thousand seven eighty-seven. We actually ended up over the high projection for this year at four thousand eight hundred seventy-three, an overall increase of one hundred forty-eight elementary school students as compared to last year. This table shows the elementary moderate projected enrollment with preschool added. Overall, we are currently at ninety-three point five percent capacity. Norwich and Matthew Whaley are at ninety-six percent capacity and Stonehouse is at one hundred and four percent capacity. All elementary schools have trailers except for Matoka to assist with space needs. Trailers are not reflected in the effective capacity in this table as they are a short-term solution to address space needs. Overall, the division will be at ninety-six percent capacity in fiscal year twenty-five and is expected to increase each year to one hundred percent in fiscal year twenty-seven. Funds for design of pre-K space were appropriated in fiscal year twenty-two by the localities with construction funding expected to be funded in fiscal year twenty-four. Based on this timeline, there would be dedicated pre-K centers beginning in fiscal year twenty-six, which would free up space within the elementary schools. This table reflects updated capacity for the elementary schools with the current pre-K classrooms being utilized beginning in fiscal year twenty-six for a K-two class, which would accommodate twenty students per classroom. Comparing this new capacity with the moderate elementary projection from this year, you can see that our elementary schools would be at an overall capacity in fiscal year twenty-seven of just over ninety percent and continues to increase each year. Four of our schools would be over one hundred percent capacity in fiscal year twenty-six when the pre-K centers would open.
Just uh, jump in and out at that point. If you notice, we've got four at over a hundred percent, but some schools that are not once pre-K is taken out of our elementary and goes into pre-K centers. And that means we would be redistricting all of our elementary schools to even out the students and push them throughout the system uh, because there's there's no space in four schools and there's some space in other schools. And so we would be redistricting when the pre-K centers open at that point in time.
Because enrollment came in this year over the high enrollment projection as well as last year, and the majority of the increase in students was at the elementary level, we're also sharing the capacity chart reflecting the high projection for the next ten years. This chart reflects only elementary students beginning in fiscal year twenty-six when the planned pre-K centers would be open. This shows that in fiscal year twenty-six, we'll, we will be at ninety-four percent capacity overall, increasing each year until reaching one hundred percent. increasing each year until reaching 100% in fiscal year 30.
That was using the high projection?
Yes.
That's your worst possible scenario, or best if we want more stu- or best if we want more students, because we obviously do.
Thank you.
Based on these projected elementary enrollment numbers, we have included design and construction of the 10th Elementary School in fiscal years 27 and 28 of the plan. The total estimated cost, based on current market conditions and escalated to the appropriate year, is $66 million. This cost includes design, construction, testing and permitting fees, construction management, technology, furnishings, fixtures, and equipment, as well as contingency funding. This estimated cost does not include land acquisition cost. As I shared earlier, funding is appropriated annually for the CIP plan, and our primary focus this evening is on fiscal year 24. The first change that I'd like to share is the renovation of the Jamestown weight room. The CIP committee recommended moving this project from fiscal year 28 to fiscal year 24 to address the inequity between the three high schools. Jamestown has the smallest weight room of the three schools, and this project will renovate and repurpose the space, creating more usable space for students. The estimated cost is $130,000. The Virginia Department of Education updated their playground space guidelines in 2021, recommending that elementary schools with more than 400 students have two areas that measure 100 feet by 120 feet in hard-surface play area. This amounts to 24,000 of square feet in total. Six of our schools have less than this recommended amount, so we have increased the playground line in the CIP by 100,000 in the first five years of the plan, so that we can begin to address this need. There is currently a project in fiscal year 26 to address this need at Stonehouse. Additionally, funds are needed to address the inclusivity and accessibility for all students on our playgrounds. We have added an additional 100,000 for this need. These adjustments will increase the playground line from 100,000 to 300,000 beginning in fiscal year 24 through fiscal year 28. In February 2022, members of our operations team met with the County Storm Water and Resource Protection Division to discuss results of a school storm drainage assessment. The assessment was initiated and conducted by James City County and conducted by PRISM engineers and contractors. The results showed that there is a significant need for storm drainage repairs. We have added 300,000 annually beginning in fiscal year 24 into the plan so that we can begin to address these necessary repairs. In consultation with the county and city finance directors, we agreed to begin including school bus replacements into the CIP beginning in fiscal year 24. Bus replacements really are no different than fire truck or ambulance replacements, and by having them as part of the CIP, they will be planned for each year. In addition, the new agreement between the localities for the joint operation of the school division no longer allows for an end-of-year spending plan, which is how we have been maintaining our smoothing replacement plan for many years. Any surplus funds at the end of each fiscal year will support our CIP in the following and future years. The cost for fiscal year 24 is estimated to be $1.35 million. During fiscal year 22, the division had a threat and vulnerability assessment completed. As part of the assessment, specific recommendations to enhance the safety and security of the division's facilities were provided. Initial funding was requested as part of our year-end spending plan request this year, but we will need a continuous stream of funding to be able to address all of the recommendations. We have proposed 300,000 beginning in fiscal year 24, with a total amount over the 10 years of $2.65 million. All of the estimated costs for projects within the five-year plan have been increased by 6% based on current market conditions. There are a few projects that we received estimates on that have more significant cost increases as outlined here. Most notable is the cost of the construction of the pre-K centers. Based on the request from the James City County Board of Supervisors, we worked with RRMM to determine if two 252-student sites would be feasible, and the cost is estimated to be $39.7 million. While we had originally requested $33 million for the construction of pre-K space, the adopted plan of the localities allocated $25 million to this project. We have also received updated estimates for the construction of the Jamestown cafeteria expansion and the 900-building renovation at Lafayette. The total increase for these projects as compared to last year is $2.3 million. We have received funding through our state's school construction grant entitlement that was approved as part of the general assembly's budget this year that we anticipate utilizing towards the Lafayette renovation. This will cover approximately $3.9 million of the cost of that project. Here you will see the additions to the plan not previously discussed. Additional school buses are added when new facilities are built with the construction of the pre-K space in fiscal year 24. Funds for additional buses are included in fiscal years 26 and 27 to accommodate the growth of the program of 100 students. These are specialized buses that accommodate 15 students per bus with car seats. Based on our established refurbishment and replacement cycles, interior repainting and carpet replacement at James River, Matthew Whaley, Norwich, and Stonehouse are included in fiscal year 33. There is also the addition of fire panel replacements in fiscal years 29 through 32. The CIP document presents projects by school. This pie graph shows the breakdown by type of project. HVAC and window projects account for 12.2% of the total five-year CIP, or $20.2 million. Refurbishments, roof replacements, and other repairs account for 5.3% of the total five-year CIP, or $8.8 million. Other projects, which include things such as refrigerator freezer replacements, generators, and school bus replacements, account for 13%, or $21.4 million. And new facilities account for 69.5%, or $114.8 million of the total five-year CIP. The superintendent's recommended five-year plan totals $165,246,000. Of this total, $3.9 million will be funded through our state's school construction grant. Some of the major projects included in the five-year plan include the construction of pre-K space, the Jamestown cafeteria expansion, and renovation of the 900-building at Lafayette in fiscal year 24, a 10th Elementary School in fiscal year 27 and 28, and HVAC replacements at Matthew Whaley and Stonehouse. This includes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Ms. Yellen, where can we begin? Ms. Hall?
Minor kind of softball, easy ones. So, are you in the projections, how do you handle the students that are in our virtual academy? For the current, I mean, I know we're decreasing that next year, but just wondered how you accounted for that?
They are duly enrolled in our student information system, so I get the information from IT and I add them back into their home school.
Okay. Assuming, because we are like, that's mothballing.
Yeah, I think there's only about 60 students.
Across the division, so they're already counted in the mix.
They're already counted, okay. See, I told you that was gonna be an easy one. The other one is, when we talk about the preschool construction and that giving us more space back, is there no renovation cost to?
That's one of mine, go ahead.
Yeah, so you've got all this preschool space with little tiny bathrooms and little tiny, I'm assuming, I don't know, little desks, little, for little people, and then how have we accounted for that?
I'm gonna hand to Mr. Snipes, I think there's a minimal change, but Mr. Snipes, do you want to speak to that, please?
Yes, there is minimal change. We're talking about desks, it's just a change, you know, change out the desk, but the restrooms that can be used are, it's minimal renovation of those because pre-K spaces, you're taking out a toilet and just putting in a toilet.
Okay, so, so any kind of concerns about renovations or whatever really isn't a concern?
No.
Yeah, we plan to move first grade into those classrooms, first and second grade in particular. Thank you.
Ms. Oregon, then Ms. Cook.
Thank you. I have, just have some questions about projections versus past numbers. And obviously, I wasn't here before last year, so this is largely for my own edification. But what were, do, what was, for those of you who were here, what was Future Things', if you were using that, projection for the years between 2013 and 2020? Because I'm, when I look at the past enrollment, we've, the highest year was 2017 to 18 with 11,477 students. So we have, we have lived with numbers higher than we have right now, and we did so for quite a number of years. So between 15 and 2020, the numbers were either right at or higher than 11,308. So we've, we have already lived this scenario, plus, plus 169 at the highest year. How, you know, what was, what was the projection at that point in time? And is it only the pand- is the pandemic the only reason that it has, that it has stayed the same?
Trying to get a handle on the question. I do know before the pandemic, as Ms. Cook referenced earlier in fiscal year 18, we decided to use low projection because we had a very small steady increase in students every year. When I first came to the division, it was about 300 students a year, and then it started to slow off, and we really were meeting low projection every year. The pandemic dropped hundreds of students, and I think at that point, before that, we were on track to have an elementary school at a certain point in time, and started to ask for it in fiscal year 18, 18 or 19. Then with the drop, everything slowed down, so we're on a very fast train to catch up at now almost 300 each year. And so I think the big question is when will it actually start to level out again? And I think from Ms. Haley's projections tonight, she suggests using most likely because she feels we're not quite back yet. And I think we're still about 100 students short of original numbers-ish, something like that.
Yes, yeah, 100 and, well.
Four, seven, so it's 100 and something.
169.
So if we were to even be half what we had this year, we'd be back completely to pre-pandemic levels. And most of that change when the pandemic went down at the elementary school, but then it's the elementary schools that is bouncing right back up again.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you very much. I appreciate this presentation, and I look forward to studying it. I'm not really ready to express an opinion, but I do have a lot of ponderings. I think this is, yeah, so, yeah, there's just a lot to consider. So I would like to see those charts with the low projections. I'm not, I just, I just feel like that's something that we need to take a look at. I understand why you're used moderate, and I appreciate that, but I'd still like to see those projections at the low, and maybe you've provided that for us and I haven't had a chance to study it, but I'd like to see those charts with the gray and the blue at the low projections. I think we just need to see that. Buses, the, I love, I like moving the bus replacement into the CIP. I think it should have been that way all along, so I'm glad that you made that process improvement. But I wonder about changes in the number of replacements needed given our movement towards non-transportation zones. I know those were few in number, but as they brought to schools and more sidewalks get built, that might increase. And then as we have fewer drivers and as we maybe adjust start times and continue to hone, I'm just curious about the impact and the need for that bus replacement cycle to be, to remain the same, and whether that needs to adjust over time. And then the rest of my comments have to do with new facilities. You know, our facilities are beautifully maintained. Anywhere I go, I always marvel at how much better our schools are, they're just beautiful. And I'm very grateful to our funding partners for that, particularly the county who bears the front of that cost. But when you look at the number of facilities we have compared to other school divisions our size, in Virginia, we have 16 facilities, the next is 19, and all the way up to 26. And I know that some of those counties or localities are bigger and more rural, and therefore the schools are more spread out, I understand that. But we're a pretty significant outlier, and whenever, I like to sort of make data-informed decisions, and whenever we're extreme outlier, I just wonder if it makes sense. We look at it from a salary perspective as not wanting to be an outlier. I don't think, I wonder if being an outlier at the facility level is a good thing for us. And, and so I, I'm just struggling and wondering about the, the pre-K space versus the school. And I, I know that we have been told, in no uncertain terms, it's been incredibly clear that we're not getting a new school, that preschool space is our only way forward. But I struggle as an individual school board member with our responsibility to do what we think is best for the kids in our division. And so what I struggle with is, you know, how many, I'd like to know how many children are housed in our trailers or how many classrooms are in our trailers, and then plus the 300 new kids that we got this year, and if with that, whether that's really a school, frankly, of 750. I think to get at what you were saying, I think Ms. Oregon about we've been living with this number of kids. When people point to the projections and suggest we don't need a new school because our growth is flattening, my assertion that we've needed a new school is based on past growth, not future growth. And so, so, so I'm struggling with that. And with our desire, with learning loss, which we will probably be addressing for the foreseeable future, we endeavor to reduce class sizes, which we're not able to do without additional facilities, particularly looking at what class size was before the recession. We've never gotten back there. Our kids need more services, we have a higher percentage of sped kids. Our teachers need collaborative space, we have, so anyway, so I'm thinking about that. And then I think about this pre-K space we're about to embark on. And the ANLAR study suggested a certain number of chairs. We're not proposing building that many because the engineers told us it wasn't feasible, so we're going closer to 500. But we still haven't had a community conversation about the need for those seats. If you look at the number of preschool or kindergartners coming into our schools, it's around 800 a year. But we're gonna have 500 pre-K spaces. What that does to the system in a mixed delivery system, and not all those kids are four-year-olds coming into fifth grade, I know we've got three and two-year-olds, I know that, but I just don't think we've had a community conversation, and that's not our conversation to have, we need to be part of it. But do, does public education need to be providing 500 preschool seats? I don't, we haven't had that conversation yet as a community, and that troubles me. And then, and then that's as a community, and then this division hasn't had the conversation of how many bright beginning seats we want to have. The original program was a 50-50 mix between sped and at-risk. And so what does 500 seats in pre-K get us vis-à-vis sped versus at-risk? And is that our, our strategic goal? We haven't had that conversation as a board, we've talked about it from a facilities perspective, but not a programming perspective. And so, so I just struggle with all of those questions and feel like we need to have some pretty meaningful strategic questions. We know that how we would use a new elementary school, because we have pre-K embedded in elementary school. We've been doing that model for a long time. We don't know how we do it when it's segregated out, because we haven't done it, and not, not recently. And, and, and we haven't had that conversation of what the mix is with sped and at-risk. And, and then, and as a community, we haven't had this conversation as a whole. So those are the things that struggle, I struggle with and ponder as we march down this road of building pre-Ski, pre-K space. I also struggle with the fact that one of our elementary schools has 800 kids in it, more than 800 kids in it. And that's bigger than all of our middle schools, and that- Um, and that um, if we build these two s- um, space, these two facilities, those campuses will then have a lot more children on them. So um, anyway, that, that's just, I'm struggling with that. Um, I, 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 I wonder, you know, what are the professional staff that we've looked at, whether it was the ANLAR study or our engineers, our superintendent have all recommended an elementary school. Um, and the delta between the two is twenty million dollars, um, based on what we just saw, I believe if that's correct. So anyway, I'm just, the things that I'm struggling with and pondering as I look at this. And um, and I look forward to studying it more and will probably ask a lot of questions related to that, Dr. Heron. But I would like to see those charts with the low projection, low enrollment projections, please.
We can get those for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Uh, any other?
Thank you, Ms. Sunley.
I really do have a simple question. I just need a visual. What's the fire panel replacement? What, what is that? What's that look like?
Mr. Snipes?
What's the fi- the replacing fire panel replacements? What are they visually? What, what are they?
Fire panels are what um, we send, the signal that gets sent to the fire department when there is an issue at a school, whether there's smoke or there's alarm. So this is how we notify the um, emergency response that we need their assistance.
Good, Ms. Sunley. Okay, uh, Ms. Oregon?
Um, yeah, I just have a couple of random questions. How many, if, if we build the preschool space and take redistrict or whatever we have to do, how many, for Stonehouse specifically, how many classrooms will open up?
We don't know by school yet, um, but there, there's no pre-K in Stonehouse right now.
Oh, okay, so none.
So they're full, they're over a hundred percent now, just with elementary kids. So there's, so there's a, it's gonna be considerable districting from Stonehouse to other schools. And, and again, the, the challenging piece for me is if we need an elementary within a short space of time again, then we're going to be redistricting again.
True, and another question that I always ask, and I'm always told, well, that's, that's not able to be part of the discussion now. But where would this new school be? Because I, I feel like that is a critical part of the conversation, especially when we're talking about having to move kids around the district. And, and I know we, you know, th- this cost doesn't include land purchase, and at no time has a, has a location been part of the conversation, which I think is critical for this to function. We're already struggling to, to transport ki- the kids we have to the, to the facilities we have. So where, at what stage should we consider that?
That becomes part of the process when you go to build a new school, that, that you start to identify land for that school. When we talked and, and we're all, we, we did have an elementary school within our five-year plan at one point, and then it was taken back out. And at that time, there was a, a committee that was meeting um, with county, city, and school divisions to look at possible parcels of land at that point in time. But then that committee was dissolved as we, we moved away from, from the elementary school idea.
Any other members with questions? No? Okay.
Uh, maybe I can just offer a kind of a, or ask and make sure that I'm on the same page as you, Dr. Heron, as far as timeline and process here. So it looks like we've got a public hearing on your recommended CIP at our next meeting. We won't take action at that meeting. We'll have, uh, we'll present this to our funding partners at the joint meeting in December. And then in our s- first meeting in December, uh, we'll attempt to take action on your, your CIP recommendation.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, alright. Alright, any questions on where we are timeline-wise? Well, thank you for.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, not timeline-wise. Could I, could we, could I get some information, when, when these five hundred seats open, what that anticipated mix would be in terms of sped, at-risk, and now that's projections and you can't say for sure. And then any waiting list that may or may not exist, or any additional students that we may, may, can, can we just get some?
We can give you a s- exact percentage right now with our current students. It's hard to project into the future. But I do think the percentage of special education students served in pre-K is increasing each year. Mr. Walker, I'm not sure if you have that tonight potentially?
It ranges anywhere currently from about sixty-three to sixty-five percent special education.
Yeah, if we could get a number, like of the five hundred kids that'll be in those two spaces, would it still be blended? And then how many special ed kids do you think it would be, and how many at-risk kids do you think it would be?
I'm not sure we can predict who's going to come into that space, um, because we don't know the students right now. But we do know based on historical data that the percentage of special ed students served has increased each year.
So could we just do it based on today's numbers, and then if we fill to five hundred, how mu-
Absolutely, yeah, we can project based on a, a current trend for five years.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to item seven-two, review amendment to the fiscal year twenty-three grants fund budget. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna pass right to Ms. Ewing, who's working overtime tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. This agenda item is to amend our grants budget to reflect additional grants that we have been awarded from the Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice. The grant from the Virginia Department of Health amounts to two hundred sixty-one thousand fifty dollars and will support the cost associated with COVID-nineteen testing across the division this school year. And the grant from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice amounts to three hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred and will provide funding to employ school security officers at our elementary schools. With the addition of these grants, it will bring our total grant budget for this fiscal year to eighteen million four hundred twenty-eight thousand two hundred eighty-six. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Ewing? We see this from time to time, pretty simple and straightforward. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Sure.
Um, item seven-three, review authorization for our staff bonus payment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and again, Ms. Ewing's going to lead off on this one.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. As part of the state budget this year, ARPA funds were allocated to school divisions to provide a bonus payment for SOQ-funded positions. And school divisions are encouraged to use additional available funds to provide pandemic bonuses to all other eligible instructional and support positions. For your consideration this evening, we are recommending bonus payments to contracted employees employed as of today, November first, and still employed in December at the time of payment. These payments would likely be issued mid-December as we anticipate receiving the state funding around December first. The amount of payment would depend on an employee's daily hours. Employees working less than four hours per day would receive five hundred dollars. Employees working more than four hours but less than six hours per day would receive seven hundred fifty. And employees working six and more hours per day would receive one thousand dollars. In addition, we propose that substitutes receive a payment of seven hundred fifty dollars once they work one hundred days this school year. We would begin reviewing data in February to determine eligibility for a substitute's payment. The total cost is estimated to be approximately two million dollars, which would be funded with one point one million in ARPA funds, and the remaining nine hundred thousand would be funded through the operating fund. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Ms. Cook?
Yeah, the, the eight hundred thousand funded through the operating funds, that was budgeted, or could you?
So a portion, if you'll recall, back in September, we amended our operating budget to account for additional state revenue that we're anticipating because our adopted budget was based on the governor's. So we're anticipating additional three hundred ninety-three thousand and that we were gonna put towards these bonus payments. The remaining difference, we would fund through attrition savings from the school year.
Did we send communication to the local governments about that additional money that we weren't? Okay, thank you. Did, did that get to us? Was that shared with us?
We'll make sure that it gets to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Sunley?
I just wanted to say, I think this is great that we're doing this and really timely right before the holidays, so thanks.
Anyone else? Any other questions or comments? Ms. Young?
Yeah, I'm, um, Mrs. Ewing, um, can you, after taxes, I mean, I realize our employees are on our, are on different scales, but what will be the approximate amount that they'll receive?
Those receiving a thousand dollar bonus would receive a net pay of six hundred forty-six dollars. Those receiving five hundred dollars would receive three hundred and twenty-three in net pay. And those receiving seven hundred fifty dollars would receive four hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty cents in net pay.
Alright, well, thank you, Ms. Ewing. Uh, moving along to our item seven-four, review program of studies for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Ms. Walters, uh, our Director of College and Career Readiness in School constantly will be presenting changes to the program of studies for next year. Thank you.
Is it on? Okay, sorry, the light wasn't turning off. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. It is my pleasure to present to you tonight the Program of Studies for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four.
Let's try to do something.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Tonight's proposed revisions and updates reflect the continuing goal of making WJCC's Program of Studies a user-friendly and relevant resource for students and families as they consider which courses, programs, and options offer the best path forward, excuse me, toward achieving their goals. As you can see here, the Program of Studies aligns with WJCC's strategic plan to elevate beyond excellence and specifically supports Goals One, Two, and Three. Before we begin, I would like to thank the many different groups and stakeholders who met, reviewed information, and provided input over the last few months to develop the Program of Studies proposed this evening. I would also like to note that any new courses added to the Program of Studies went through the New Course Proposal Process, which includes an interdisciplinary committee review and considers impacts on staffing, facilities, and other courses within the content area. As we continue our goal of making the Program of Studies a user-friendly tool for students and families that outlines the courses and content available within WJCC schools, you will see changes tonight that reflect updates with the user in mind, providing more clarity whenever needed, excuse me. Overall changes and updates to the Program of Studies include minor grammatical changes in course updates, updates to general information to ease in accessing and understanding that information, and the addition of eleven new course offerings to enhance our programming for students. Additionally, it is important to note that the updated New Horizons CTE and Governor's School Program information will be updated within our Program of Studies once we receive an approved copy from their board. I will move through the changes and updates being proposed for the Program of Studies this evening. You will find these in summary form within the summary of changes chart provided to you. This chart identifies all proposed changes for the Program of Studies this year and includes the page where you will find each of these changes. If a page is not included within this chart, then no change is being proposed for that page within the Program of Studies for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. I'd like to begin on page five. Within the general information and terminally, terminology section, we have updated two items, grade point average in waiting section and honor roll. The chart within the grading scale and waiting section was updated to provide clarity that the quality points listed are used in calculation of a student's grade point average. The honor roll section was added to define the two honor roll types in the division for families based on policy regulation IKDR, which was updated in October. Within the middle school program on page nine, we have updated the language related to accelerated math to align with the current structures in place to allow families to pursue the option of accelerating their student in math within middle school. The updates include the addition of a testing window prior to the start of school in mid-August. Within the high school program section of the Program of Studies, beginning on page ten, there were minor changes and updates made this year. First, under other diploma types, the word purse was corrected to pursue to provide an accurate description. So beginning in this section, you will see that all references to Thomas Nelson Community College, or TNCC, have been updated to Virginia Peninsula Community College and VPCC due to a name change by the college beginning this past July. Within the summary of changes chart, you will find a list of all pages where this particular update was made throughout the Program of Studies. Within the virtual learning section on page twenty-two, there were two changes made. The WJCC Virtual Academy section was updated and adjusted to other virtual options to increase flexibility in programming based on enrollment and need. Next, the language related to virtual Virginia courses was updated to clarify ability, excuse me, availability of this option. Additionally, within the experiential learning section on page twenty-four, the course description for independent study was updated to add the word "it" and to appropriately update the title of the gifted and talented development resource teacher. This concludes the overall updates and revisions to the, for the proposed Program of Studies. I will now move on to share specific updates to course offerings and descriptions at the secondary level. This year, WJCC is, is excited to put forward multiple new course options for our middle school students. Content areas that contain new courses include math, science, fine arts, and career and technical education. In this next section, I will outline these new courses for you. In middle school math, we have added a new course of pre-algebra six-seven, which is indicated on the upper elementary and middle school math sequence chart and through the course description provided on pages twenty-eight and twenty-nine. This course was developed to support accelerated learners that have shown a strength in the content area in grade five but were not identified earlier in elementary school to participate in pre-algebra six in fifth grade. This course allows students the opportunity to accelerate in math in middle school without skipping content. Pre-algebra six-seven covers the standards from both pre-algebra six and pre-algebra seven at an accelerated pace, allowing students to learn all content and move into either pre-algebra eight or algebra one at the successful completion of the course. Students enrolled in pre-algebra six-seven will take the math seven SOL at the end of the course as well. Criteria for placement in the course will be based upon student performance in math and teacher recommendation. Within our middle school science offerings, we are adding an elective for students to expand on interests and opportunities in middle school. Forensic science is a middle, middle school science elective available for students in grade seven or eight. This course, which can be found on page thirty, will look at the history of forensic science, the skills and techniques needed to solve crimes, and will support students in enhancing skills to solve problems and work on a team. Excuse me. In addition to forensic science, we are excited to put seven new middle school electives forward tonight. In fine arts, we have added a digital art class on page thirty-five for eighth-grade students. This course will use standard computer tools and software to create visual art, graphic design, imaging, and photography. In career and technical education, we are introducing six new courses tonight, which can be found beginning on page forty. The first group of courses, App Creators, Computer Science for Innovators and Makers, Design and Modeling, and Medical Detectives, are project lead-the-way courses that will be taught as one course with each course lasting nine weeks. These courses will all be taught by the same teacher and will not require students to change teachers or rooms at the end of each marking period, but instead have a seamless transition into the next course. This partnership of courses, available to students in grades seven and eight, allows for students to learn about computer science, engineering, coding, robotics, DNA, and crime scene analysis, and medical investigations and problems through hands-on, project-based learnings and labs. The second pairing of courses is Digital Technology Foundations and Make It Your Business, and is also available to students in grades seven and eight. These courses pair well as first semester students will learn about emerging technologies, tools, and applications to prepare them for the current workplace in Digital Technology Foundations. And then second semester in Make It Your Business, students will learn how to design, establish, and operate a small group or class business, supporting students in learning the basic principles of business and the skills to be successful in a business environment. supporting students in learning the basic principles of business and the skills to be successful in a business environment. The above-proposed elective courses will meet a need in our middle schools to not only expand the number of elective opportunities available to students, but also to expand in the variety of content available for our middle school students to learn and explore. I would like to begin the high school course updates on page forty-two of the Program of Studies. As a reminder, you may follow along with these changes on the Summary of Changes chart provided to you as a quick reference guide. Tonight, I will review updates and edits made to courses in English, Math, Science, Social Studies, and CTE Departments. Within the High School English section of the Program of Studies, we have made multiple updates. First, we have updated the chart on page forty-two to include an asterix with AP English Language and Composition, indicating that the course has an associated SOL, the reading SOL, which was also updated in the course description on page forty-five. Also on page forty-two for English Nine, we have removed the prerequisite of English Eight to align with our current practices of working with students through our middle school summer enrichment program to strengthen their content knowledge in English. Throughout the English section, you will see minor changes in course descriptions for English Nine, English Ten, Innovation, English Twelve Capstone, Creative Writing, Independent Study, Mass Media, and Speech, to address grammatical changes with the addition or removal of hyphens and commas where appropriate. We have updated the English Eleven and Honors English Eleven course descriptions to identify that the reading SOL is taken at the end of the course. This year, we are adding an English elective option for students in Grades ten through twelve of African-American literature. This elective course, which can be found on page forty-six, will survey the works of African-American authors throughout history and will enhance and increase student development of literacy and analytical skills. Also found in the English section is the changes made to the Independent Study Course, which was also described previously in tonight's presentation. In the Mathematics section, beginning on page fifty, we have removed the L attached to the course codes for Algebra One, Geometry, and Algebra Two. This was in place to identify the course was attached to a lab course. In alignment with our updated procedures of offering the lab course but not requiring the lab course, we can adjust the course codes to remove the L. For the Algebra Two Trigonometry Course on page fifty-one, we have removed the Algebra One in the listing of prerequisites because geometry is a required prerequisite for the course and geometry has a prerequisite of Algebra One. Therefore, including Algebra One as a prerequisite for Algebra Two Trigonometry is redundant. For Math Analysis Precalculus, we have added the option of Algebra Two Trigonometry as a prerequisite for the course to align with updated course offerings. Within the Science section, beginning on page fifty-four, we have added language to the Notes section of the Suggested Course Sequence Chart to clarify to students and families that due to federal accountability requirements, all students enrolled in Biology are required to take the End of Course SOL regardless of the number of science verified credits they have earned. Within the Social Studies section, beginning on page sixty-two, we have made grade level updates to three courses. In order to best align with course content, we have updated AP European History, Sociology, and AP Psychology to all include grade level requirements of Grades ten through twelve. Within Career and Technical Education, beginning on page eighty-two, we have made minor updates to course codes, course names, and course requirements for select courses. We are also introducing a new course this evening, Career Strategies. On page eighty-three, we have removed the SB from Advanced Computer Information Systems Course to align with course code practices in the State and Division. On page eighty-five, you will see that we have added a new course, Career Strategies, to offer students the opportunity in high school to complete an in-depth study of career clusters and pathways, align these to their interests and goals, and develop a supporting plan related to their academic and career-related goals. This course is intended to be offered as a summer course to select students in supporting the transition to high school. Beginning on page eighty-six, the Dual Enrollment Health Science Courses of EMT, Medical Assistant, and Nurse Aid have all been updated with language related to the change of TNCC to VPCC, and we have updated the credits awarded by VPCC due to updates in credit hours provided from the college. On page ninety, we have updated the course code and name of Marketing Management to Strategic Marketing in alignment with updates at the State. For Introduction to Engineering and Design, on page ninety-three, we have removed the concurrent enrollment option of Algebra One Sequence Two to align with current WJCC course offerings. This, this concludes our updates to course offerings and descriptions for middle and high school. As a reminder, the New Horizons Career and Technical Education Program of Studies for twenty-three, twenty-four and the Governor's School Program Model will be updated and included upon the approval of their Board. An additional update that will be included upon determinations made, excuse me, upon determinations made at the January School Board Meeting will be the Updated School Board Members section. I would now like to share the Course Request Timeline for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We are continuing to adjust our timeline in our work towards identifying and solidifying student requests earlier in the year. Beginning in January, when we return from winter break, school counselors will begin classroom and individual planning sessions with all of our rising sixth through twelfth grade students. For the past two years, we have offered our course planning and curriculum fair virtually. This year, we are moving back to an in-person event, and those will be held on January eighteenth for rising ninth through twelfth grade students and January nineteenth for rising sixth to eighth grade students. Also in January, school counselors will be facilitating transition planning by providing lessons for all of their feeder schools. Our Course Request Window for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year will open online for all rising sixth through twelfth graders and their families on January seventeenth and close on February seventh. This concludes my presentation on the Program of Studies for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. Questions you may have at this time?
Thank you, Ms. Walters. That's a lot.
That's a lot.
That's a lot. So, thank you very much for, for the information. Ms. Hundley and then Dr. Beers?
Just for the viewing audience and even for my clarification, so if you have a class, like you said, African-American literature, is that in all three high schools? Or is that hybrid? Or like all these new courses, is it in all or just some and some are virtual?
So, all of our courses in the Program of Studies are offered and available for students at each high school to sign up for, to request. Implementation of the course in each building will depend on student requests and availability.
Good, Ms. Hundley? Uh, who did I say? Uh, I think it's Dr. Beers and then Ms. Young.
The first thing I'd like to say is, this is a, a really excellent example of a, uh, really a, a comprehensive high school. And I am, I'm very much, I very much approve of the whole list of interdisciplinary courses that you have. And I remember American studies.
Yeah, Dr. Beers, can you use your microphone?
You do this in every single, uh, discipline, every single area, and, uh, I wish in some ways, I wish I was going back to high school.
You're knocking out of the park.
Part of it is, it really, it really demonstrates that, um, we have, uh, we really have superb high schools and, uh, and our teachers and extraordinary curriculum, and, uh, that's about all I need to say. Thanks.
Thank you. And I think this, uh, if you don't mind, this is a good moment. I'd like to thank the Secondary Content Coordinators who are joining me behind me, um, as well tonight. A lot of hard work put in by this team here.
Thank you so much for everything you've done. Uh, Ms. Young?
Yes, uh, hi. How are you doing?
Hi.
You did a good job, by the way. I really enjoyed it. I did have a couple of questions. I, I love some of the things, uh, some of the things that I'm seeing are going to be happening at the middle school. I mean, and the high school, the Career Strategies course, for example. I mean, you said this is supposed to be a summer program. How, how are those children or students selected for that? Are they selected or can they ask to, can they apply for that?
So, we tried this, um, year one as, as kind of a pilot, um, this past summer. And so, we, we worked heavily with teams at the middle school level and the high school level to really, um, develop a plan to support the transition to high school for some of our students. So, um, the committee meets to kind of determine what parameters we might be looking at, and we're still, we, we deal with, um, enrollment numbers. So, because it is a summer program, we do need to make sure that, um, we have enough to staff it and not too much that we can't offer it. So, um, we reevaluate it because it has just been one year on what the specific details of, of students that we're, we're looking to invite into this opportunity will include.
So, it's, it will be by invitation?
Yes.
Okay, and I guess that, and is it going to be, um, I mean, Ms. Hundley brought up, is this going to be at all three high schools or would this be a combined course for, from the three high schools?
So, so, some of that for the summer opportunity is still being determined, but we only have typically one summer site for summer school.
Right.
Um, so it would be housed there.
Okay, and then that brings me to the middle school offering with the medical forensics.
Sure.
That whole cluster.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the four courses that are going to be open, is, is that by first come, first served, uh, students that are interested in that? Or is that by invitation also?
No, the four Project Lead the Way courses, uh, at the middle school level are just as any of our other elective, um, options at the middle school level. So, any student who's interested in, in taking that course can sign up for it during the course window and in meetings with their counselor, um, and then based on enrollment numbers is, is how sections are set.
Right, I understand that. I mean, and the same, I think, from what you're saying, the same applies for the digital technology and Make It Your Business.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think those are very exciting course offerings for kids. I'd like to sign up for, um, thank you. I appreciate your response. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And Ms. Hundley and then Hummel, excuse me, and then we'll go back to Ms. Hundley.
Nice job. Thanks a lot. We, I, I've gone through, what, seven of these now, so, nice, nice job.
Thank you.
So, another question about the offerings where you say, uh, depending on enrollment. So, what it, what's our limit? Like, what does it take to make a class, uh, make?
So, um, typically the number that we look at for not offering a course, um, would be below fifteen students requesting.
So, so if there is like a really attractive new course, getting the, the word out to students is kind of important, so.
Absolutely.
I don't even know how you market it as the, the teacher that wanted to teach this, these really cool classes. It would be, you know, you gotta promote it a little bit.
Sure. So, some of the things that we do as a division to make sure that, um, our stakeholders all receive the, the most updated information. As a team, we, we have what we call a content area update meeting, um, which is where secondary content coordinators all meet with couns, secondary counselors and administrators to discuss any changes or additions to programming within their content area. That happens prior to counselors doing classroom lessons, um, with students at all grade levels and before they have meetings, and then we have our course planning and curriculum fair, which is also a great opportunity to have staff out there, um, talking directly to families and students about some of these opportunities.
Because really, we're not hiring any additional teachers to teach all of these new additions to the Program of Studies, so there are going to be winners and losers based on interest level.
Correct.
So, just want to make sure everyone kind of knows when they look at the Program of Studies, it's, it's great. But really, try to, try to think about that when you're, you're planning your studies, your Program of Studies as a student and a parent. Project Lead the Way, huge fan of Project Lead the Way, but I know you have to have special accreditation to teach Project Lead the Way. And so, is that also, and you had said these are going to be course offerings, the other, the electives in high school, but Project Lead the Way is a little different. Is that also being offered in all three of the middle, uh, all, the multiple middle schools?
Sure.
Or is that just going to be limited to one or two?
We are expanding our PLTW, they call it the Gateway Program, to all four middle schools. It's currently housed at one middle school. Um, while we are applying for some grant funds through Project Lead the Way, we can support the funds for training and site fees through Perkins if necessary as well.
Oh, good. Okay, so that, that's good to know. And then, um, this is sort of related to the Program of Studies, but it's the New Horizon. When I heard Ms. Young you saying that in the Board Meeting that you attended, that there were so many people that were on a waiting list that didn't, didn't get in, couldn't. How does the, a student that's looking at the Program of Studies and wants to take advantage of the offerings at New Horizon, how do they know whether they're going to be one of the ones that makes, makes the list or not?
That's a hard prediction to make, even for our own staff. Because the, our students apply to New Horizons and their team makes the determination on, on acceptance. So, we work hard with our students to have a plan and then have a backup plan, uh, for if this doesn't work out, what should, you know, what should we do? Um, and there's typically enough time after we find out from New Horizons on who has been accepted and who's not to work with those students to still, um, have a appropriate plan for their goals.
But each school has an allocation. Is that correct? Because we pay into New Horizons, so we have an allocation, correct? Or not correct?
We pay for a certain number of, of slots, but it really depends on which students are, are invited to be part of it. It's become more competitive every single year. And I think what's, what's good is within our own Program of Studies, we're offering not exactly the same, but similar types of courses that will, that are career-oriented as well. So, we do offer a lot within our own Program of Studies as well.
I just want to make sure we're getting our.
We sure, we sure will.
Our, yeah, okay, thanks.
I just add to that because we've, we've had this discussion, we've had discussion before. And, um, and, and, um, and the reason so many of our students can satisfy so many requirements in our own high school system is because we offer so many of those courses. And, and other school divisions quite a while ago made the decision that they weren't going to offer as many of those courses. So, that's why there are many more of their students that, that go, uh, to New Horizons, and it's not a disadvantage, I think, at all to our students because we do have a lot.
We're getting our money's worth.
Sorry?
I just want to make sure we're getting our money's worth.
Oh, yeah. No, no. But I, I keep an eye on that.
Ms. Ordigo and then Ms. Young and then Ms. Hundley.
I just had a small question about new, new courses. You said they, they won't take place if it's fewer than fifteen students that express interest, right?
It's any course.
Any course.
Mm-hmm.
What, how many years in a row, I mean, how many, would, would the class, class then be offered again the next year? I mean, how many years will it be offered before it goes away?
So, annually, um, our students are given the opportunity to, to request any course within the Program of Studies that they meet the requirements for, grade level prerequisites, things like that. We look very carefully at data and historical, um, offerings of a course before we recommend to the Board on removing any course options from our Program of Studies. There are times that courses may, um, be very full and have a much larger, um, interest at one school but not the other. We wouldn't remove it if it's not happening at all three schools because there's still an interest, um, out there. So, it, I don't have a set timeline, um, because it, we usually look at five years' data before we would consider start, starting to pull some classes out.
So, back to, back, oh, sorry, back to Ms., Mrs. Hundley's question then. Say you have one high school where there's huge interest in, in one of the new courses and then another high school where there's fewer than fifteen. Does that? Does that mean that it, the course would not happen at the high school with less interest?
Correct.
Okay. So there could be a scenario, going back to what she was saying, where you have a course at one high school and you don't have it in another.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Young and then Ms. Huntley.
I just came to mind the French film class that they had a few years ago where they just didn't have enough people that were interested in it. Yes, my first question is, I mean, we're, we're setting forth here on, um, some really interesting classes. What are, I mean, how are teachers selected to teach these classes? Because it comes to mind that if you aren't prepared to teach a class in medical, you know, in medical detectives and doing a forensic approach, they're not going to be successful.
Sure. So, uh, specific to the Project Lead the Way courses, in order for a teacher to teach that, they are required to be trained by Project Lead the Way on the course and the content within it. Um, so the teachers are in partnership with the administration from the building.
Right.
Um, we are notified, we being, the CTE team is notified on who will be teaching that so we can help support them in registering for that training uh, that is provided to them.
Because I see that Project Lead the Way are on all four of these. So
Yes.
So they would receive training from, from that, from that. And then my second question is, I, I was, wasn't, was just some information about uh, the other day at the board meeting when we were talking at the, the Board of Trustees, we were talking about how students are selected for these courses because, um, I think a lot of people have a very mistaken idea that because people go into trades that they're, you know, and they're not doing that well in high school. That's not necessarily to the case. And one of the things that came out of that is that, um, two, two big qualifications to, uh, gain access to those courses. Uh, grade point average played into it also. And there, uh, was mentioned that there were some four point O students that were, were in those programs. Uh, was they selected to be in them? Second thing was attendance. And so if you are a student in, uh, Williamsburg, James City County and you're interested in your, and you, and you need to make sure that your attendance is up so that you can, so they don't say, oh, this student does attend, you know, you've only got forty percent attendance. You're not going to get in regardless of your interest level. So I think those are two things. And you said you were working with students to help them if they're interested on that, uh, pathway to
Yes.
to be realistic about what they need to do. Because I mean, those, I mean, the times that I've been at New Horizons, I went with Dr. Bears, uh, to, over to Woodside and he wanted to do the electronics course. I mean, they're amazing, those classes. Uh, and, uh, when I was down at New Horizons, they were, um, um, they were, there's, there were some welding students and they were so involved and governor's school. I think those are just amazing opportunities. And so if you are a student who are, who is interested in that, be sure you're preparing yourself. Uh, I don't know who I'm, if I'm talking to any students, but, but, uh, because I, I think, uh, from what I'm hearing is that you have people that would help you get there if you're, you're truly interested. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Huntley?
Yeah. For me, it's going to be in the presentation of how we, um, introduce this to students because I know, um, a lot of counselors know what their kids are interested in. So let's just say that I have a child, I'm a parent and I am interested in the medical explore. And I read off to my child in the new study, hey, how about for your elective, you pick this? Okay, for me as a child, I would have needed a visual. So are any of these new courses going to be like videos so the kid can see exactly what that course looks like that will spark their interest to say, hey, I'd like to do that rather than just reading about it on paper?
So year one, it's challenged to have videos done, um, as we've done in the past because we don't have them in existence yet, um, to, to film. But that's certainly something we would add to our, um, you know, our library in the future.
All right.
Ms. Ordigo and then Dr. Bears.
Sorry. Just what, one more question about, so where, where does the, um, the impetus for some of these courses come from? Is it just your team has a great idea? Is it a teacher has a great idea?
Sure.
Is there any kind of long, is there any kind of long range planning at this, even the state level of this is where we see future labor shortages and we need to funnel some kids?
Sure. So we're hitting on a, a handful of great topics here. Um, as far as speaking towards, uh, middle school electives, as far back as at least in my, in my time here, um, when we conducted as a division, a, um, research into our master schedules, um, the feedback from not only that report from that team, but also from stakeholders that we're met with was, um, which included parents and students and teachers, was a need for more choice at the middle school level, um, and a concern of the limited options within electives. So when looking at that from a, a CNI team, then we work with, so for example, I can speak to, to my process. I worked with counselors to get feedback on what they're hearing from students. I worked with CTE teachers. Um, and then from a CTE requirement at the state level, we have to survey students before, so for CTE, new CTE courses, not only do we go through this process here, but we have to apply to the state to offer a CTE course. And as part of that application includes, um, survey data from students in grades seven through eleven on the content areas. It also includes labor market needs from the local area. Um, so all of that goes into the application to the DOE to offer these courses. So based on that feedback, our teams work together to create some of these middle school elective off, offerings. So really kind of a three years in the making. At the high school level, um, many of the options that you saw tonight came from conversations really that teachers were having with students on, we're really missing this, or I'd love to be able to take a class on XYZ. And then those conversations with teachers and administrators happened with content coordinators. And then, uh, the proposal came forward to offer a course such as we see tonight.
Thank you for that explanation.
So, uh, let Dr. Bears ask his question or make his comment, but I think we've got, I, I think a unanimous support for this, uh, program studies revision for twenty-three, twenty-four. If there were any further questions, maybe we can submit them via SBQ. Would that be okay? Let Dr. Bears have your, your question.
Yeah, I just, just, it's a really quick question. Um, I know that, um, yeah, and with students, there's interest in, in learning some of the other foreign languages, not just German, Spanish and, uh, uh, French. Can they, um, are there, are, are there offerings online? You know, if a student wants to, uh, learn Chinese or Russian, whatever it might be, is, is there, is there an opportunity, um, in our high schools to, uh, do something like that online or, or?
It depends on the language. Some are, um, more of a challenge to find than others. There is a state approved online provider list that the DOE puts out that is kind of our starting point for where we look at because within each provider, the state has approved individual courses. So what that list means to us, um, as divisions is that, um, those courses align with the Virginia Department of Education standards for those courses.
And are students, uh, do you let them know that this, this opportunity, uh, is available? Or do they have to sort of hunt around and gee, what if I want to take this?
Sure.
Cause I, 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 you know, I happen to know one of those languages has suddenly become very popular and, uh, and I know there's some high schools, uh, bigger high schools. I, I understand that. So they have a larger staff. Where, uh, Russian, for example, is a, is a course that, uh,
Sure. So we work with our students on courses that we have within our program of studies. Uh, when students exhaust those options, um, we can start to look at outside options. Um, those all come with a cost though, and typically they are per course, per student. So
We actually had to pay for those.
Yes, sir.
That's too bad. Okay.
Well, thank you for your time this evening and, and team for coming in and, and showing your faces and giving us the opportunity to say thank you to you as well for all of your work. You're probably going to be getting a few more questions via email. So
I'm ready.
we'll look out for that. But I think we're, we're ready to, uh, support this at our next meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
All right. Move on to item seven, five, uh, review request for proposal two zero, two, three, zero, one, six, three, bleacher basketball stop inspection.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Snipes is going to take this one and the next item also.
Good evening, School Board. Chair, School Board members and Dr. Heron. Tonight's proposed agenda item supports goal four of the strategic plan is brought forward for your review of requests for proposal two zero, two, three, zero, one, six, three, which is the bleacher basketball stop inspection, maintenance and repair services. This proposal, we're seeking qualified vendors to do annual inspections of our bleachers and our basketball stops, wrestling mat holders and gym divider curtains. They will provide inspection reports to operations and perform maintenance and repair services. A request for proposal was issued on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, the due date of September sixth, twenty twenty-two. Again, this is a placeholder agenda item because at the time this item was prepared, the information about the bid had not been received. The operations contracted services line contains funds for this service each year. And a final cost proposal will be shared with you at the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. The superintendent recommends the board review the proposals information and be prepared to award at that November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
All right. Questions for Mr. Snipes? Final cost coming out the next meeting? Can we wait? All right. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. And, uh, we'll move on to item seven, six, uh, review invitation for bid two zero, two, three, zero, five, two, zero, Tuano Middle School restroom renovations.
Again, tonight's proposal agenda item supports goal four of the strategic plan and is brought forward for your review of invitation for bid two zero, two, three, zero, five, two, zero, which is a Tuano Middle School restroom renovation. The, the Tuano Middle School, Middle School restroom renovation was approved in the FY twenty-two CIP and put out to bid, um, earlier this year. However, the bid came back too high. And so we had to go back out until now. Uh, the base scope of work will include at Tuano replacing faucets and installing lavatory pipe protectors, replacing flush valves, installing a new floor towel and floor drain covers, replacing toilet partitions with ADA grab bars, painting and replacing cast iron sinks. There are two add alternatives to this bid. Add alternative number one is to remove and modify the gym office shower. And add alternate number two is to remove and replace all the lavatory units, um, with vitreous china alternative utilizing existing utilities and exposed arm carriers. If you want to know what that is, put it in SBQ. Invitation for bid was sent out on October tenth with a due date November seventh. Again, this is a placeholder agenda items because at the time the item was prepared, the bid opening process had not been completed. Um, again, funding for this project was included in the FY twenty-two CIP in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. We currently have a balance remaining of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars because of design fees. The superintendent recommends the board review the bid information and prepare, prepare to award the Tuano restroom refurbishment IFB at your November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
That was fast talking.
Yeah. Yeah. I figured you guys were monitoring.
So CIP, CIP allotted for three eighty-six. We have a balance of three sixty-three. We paid what so far?
We paid that out for design fees to help us with design.
So what's outstanding? And maybe I'm missing something. Is there?
Balance remaining of three sixty-three. So we've spent approximately twenty-three thousand.
That's what I was asking, twenty-three thousand. Okay. Questions for Mr. Snipes? Are we losing anything at having had to do a rebid?
No, it, we just lost time. We, we wanted to get it done last summer to start this school year, but we weren't able to. So hopefully we'll get it done over this summer and students will come back to new refurbished restrooms.
Cool. Great. All right. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. You might be getting an SBQ.
From me.
I want to know what that is.
Item seven, seven, review revisions to this current school year's calendar twenty-two, twenty-three. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kiefer is going to bring proposed revisions to the calendar this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Uh, good evening, members of the board. Uh, this evening we bring to you a school calendar modification for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, uh, which is really related to being able to designate June ninth as the graduation day for the school division. And the information that we provided for you in advance of the meeting, it shared that, uh, June nine, currently a school day would be shifted to a student holiday, which would also be a teacher collaboration, learning and planning day. Uh, just recently we learned that Kaplan Arena is not available for graduations for WJCC. Quite frankly, we thought they may not be available last year and they, they turned out to be available and we enjoyed being there. Hampton Coliseum is our best and only option for an inside venue. Uh, and the date range whereby we could schedule graduation was particularly limited. Uh, June ninth is the date that we can schedule graduation at Hampton Coliseum and accommodate our graduating students. So we are bringing forward this recommendation to you this evening to change June ninth from a school day to a student holiday. Just a couple other notes that I want to point out. Uh, we currently have a student holiday on April twenty-eighth. That has been built into the calendar. It has been on the calendar as a collaboration, learning and planning day that the board approved last year. I'm highlighting that date because based on the potentiality for inclement weather, wanted everybody to know that that may be a day that we convert from a student holiday to a school day if necessary. And also further point out that within the calendar that's posted online, there is information that suggests that the makeup days happen at the discretion of the superintendent, uh, based on any number of factors. So I'm, I'm alluding to both of those pieces just so the community can be aware that potentially April twenty-eighth would become a school day down the road.
Mr. Kiefer, any questions on this, uh, revised calendar recommendation? Ms. Cook?
Yeah. Thank you. So I, I know this is gripping TV. Um, so a lot of people are watching, but what you just said, is that going to be communicated to them? So that everybody's aware that these things may happen?
We, we will communicate that and information that goes out to families regarding the calendar shift.
Thank you.
And it's also on the current calendar now. It's been
Right.
Right. But we, we will add as a reminder the potentiality.
Thank you.
I say all eyes on Ms. Wall right now as far as communication goes.
Ms. Wall, you want to speak to how we're going to communicate the graduation?
Yes, thank you. Um, should the board adopt this change later on in the agenda? I have a message ready to go to staff members and community that would indicate that, that would speak to the possibility of April twenty-eighth as alluded, and then we'll get the calendar, the revised item up online as well.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. And yes, we do see this, uh, on our action portion of our agenda this evening, um, for consideration. Ms. Ordigo and then Ms. Hummel?
Um, we have a certain number of snow days or inclement weather days always built in, correct?
No, ma'am. We have a hundred and eighty day instructional calendar, school calendar that's built out. The, the state requires either one hundred and eighty days or nine hundred and ninety hours. We, we are within the nine hundred and ninety hour framework. So the conversion of one eighty to one seventy-nine doesn't necessarily impact the, the accreditation piece, but they're not, they're not built into the calendar.
Okay. So if we had two snow days in January, would that, uh, would, could people then count on April twenty-eighth going away? That's what I'm trying to, to, how, how, when will we know? Because we don't know our weather situation.
It would have to be a fairly significant winter before we lose April twentieth because there are some additional days built into the calendar. Plus with severe inclement weather and the inability to get to school, we can, uh, be ready to revert to virtual learning as well.
Okay.
So potentially we, we would have one snow day and then the next day we would, we would lift up virtual learning. That would count as an instructional day. And we've got, I think, up to ten of those that we can use.
Correct.
Okay. So we'd have to be without any instruction for over ten days.
For a considerable length of time before we, before we would take April twentieth.
Okay, thank you.
It's still a, a possibility we want to put out there just in case.
Sure.
Ms. Hummel?
Um, on the other hand, let's say we have an extremely warm winter where we have absolutely no snow days.
Amen.
At all. Do we, is there room in this calendar where we, we give, we give time back?
We have to do one eighty or nine ninety. So, so our calendar, that's what it's built around. And our calendar is built to get as much instruction as, and as possible for students before SOLs. So it's all built very carefully to allow instruction to happen when it's needed.
Okay. And then I know that there have been some teachers that have spoken at our school board meetings about, um, having, you know, that we started a week early, that we're ending at the same time. And so I just wondered, Mr. Kiefer or Dr. Heron, if you can just address
Sure.
the, the rationale and the whole thing, just address it. Again, I'm sure you, I know you've done it in the past, but just since the calendar is going to be new in everyone's mind.
Mr. Kiefer's a calendar bound too.
Okay.
Thank, thank you for that designation. There, there were four items that, uh, as a calendar committee, we really focused on in building the calendar out. Doing what's best for students, maintaining the pre-deliberate day start that we utilized in twenty-one, twenty-two, two solid weeks for the winter holiday, and then strategically scheduling options during the year for teachers to collaborate, learn and plan. And as a result of that, we created those collaboration, learning and planning days throughout the course. And as a result of that, we created those collaboration, learning, and planning days throughout the course of the entire school year. Uh, had one in October, there's another one next week, there are, is a day in January, there's one in, um, March, there's another one in April. So we built those six days of collaboration, learning, and planning into the calendar to provide time for teachers. Previously, the division had a number of early release days that I think were an attempt at the same purpose, but as we discussed with committee and heard from stakeholders, many people found that those general early release days were not incredibly beneficial, uh, to either entity, either the teachers, or the parents, or the students in terms of having to create options post-school. So thi- this is the first year that we've gone through the scenario with an early start and what appears to be a, a similar ending point, but there are six days that were those designated CLP days built into the calendar.
I could make just one additional point. There were no extra days added to the teacher's contract. We took days that teachers would have done before schools started and put them throughout the year because of the, the focus and the need for planning that we heard over and over and over again. We're, we were commended in that based on teacher voice. So now they're more strategically placed to allow that time when it's really needed during the course of the year for both professional learning and planning and collaboration.
Thanks.
And you're going to, uh, start working on the next, uh, calendar, what, pretty soon, right?
Did you want me to just share a draft tonight, Dr. Beers?
Just, I haven't had the call for next, for the next.
August first, we're going to start in August, well, let's get the word out, no. We do, we'll have some drafts available.
No, I, I.
We, our intent is to bring forward a, a twenty-three, twenty-four calendar in early January for the board to look at, and bring a twenty-four, twenty-five calendar as a draft as well.
I know, and, and it is a, uh, uh, it's an arduous task, I've, I've, I know. So I'm, uh, always very impressed. It, they all, it all just seems to run.
You've had a, the privilege of serving on the committee, haven't you?
Sorry.
You've served on the committee, have you not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, I.
Volunteering again this year?
Sure.
But, but on a serious note, what you said so eloquently, I think may need to be put back in writing as we get towards the end of school, because those questions are going to come back to us again, why are we? So whatever you just said, if we can capture that and attach that to something, because that's going to come back up.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Hummel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. All right, like we mentioned, we're going to see this again, uh, uh, on action, and, uh, perhaps more discussion, maybe not. We'll see. We'll move on to item seven-eight, uh, review school board evaluation tool. It is that time of year again, and I just want to kick this over to Dr. Beers, who's going to be heading up this effort. Dr. Beers?
Okay, uh, uh, what, what, um, we have here, uh, we just, I just, we just wanted to find out if initially, um, um, I was pretty, um, satisfied with the nature of, uh, the evaluation form that we used last year. Um, but we wanted to, uh, give you, um, an opportunity to take a look, and if there's any issues about it, or you want to change it, we're going to change the process, uh, a little bit than, uh, what we have done before. Um, if there, if there's not a need to change this, uh, at this point, um, I did send an email out, um, or actually Beth sent an email out, um, indicating a couple of dates, um, because we want to try to follow the same, um, timeframe that we, that we used before. And, um, what I'm asking for, um, is to, um, uh, complete the evaluation, um, and try to get it back to me by this, uh, by, sorry, November the twelfth. So that I, that will give, uh, me time to, um, uh, not summarize, but to tabulate all the various response that the people have made, um, before, um, doing any kind of summary. Um, we didn't do that last year, and I heard loud and clear that, that would be helpful for people to see what other people have said in each of those categories. And I, I was thinking the twelfth because the next, uh, Tuesday would be, um, a board meeting, and we could, uh, look at those, um, uh, comments, um, during our closed session. Then, um, following that, um, taking that information or changes or, or, uh, um, uh, corrections, whatever you want to call those, um, then, uh, then we would make a first stab at a draft of the self-evaluation, um, where, uh, we begin to aggregate, and we also begin to, uh, create a narrative form like we did, um, last year. And that draft would be, um, emailed to, um, board members for an opportunity to make comments, um, uh, additions, thoughts, whatever it might be, back to me. Um, so that, um, in December sixth, our, our first meeting in December, uh, I would bring that draft to the board, um, and, uh, if there are any additional comments or thoughts, um, to be shared, get those as well, um, and then go on and, um, uh, actually, I, I, I think I've skipped something here. What I was hoping is that on that December sixth meeting, I would bring a sort of a final, final draft for, uh, the board's, um, uh, approval, uh, or not, wherever the case may be. Is that making sense? You understand the, for, we wanted to try, I wanted to try to get things as close to the dates that we had last year. It's a little tricky because, um, of, uh, the Thanksgiving holiday, but, um, um, uh, what I'm hoping is eleven days is more than enough time to do your self-evaluation and then, um, get those back to me. The one additional request that I had, I would, and Sarah was such a big help, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask her again. It's really helpful to have an additional board member, um, work with me on this, especially as we begin to tabulate that and also begin to, uh, create a narrative. So, uh, I'm not going to hold my breath, but if anybody is interested in helping me again, and Sarah, I'm not including you if you want to do this again. But, uh, uh, I, I, I won't embarrass anybody now, but sometime in the next day or so, send me an email if you're, if you are willing to help me out with that.
Cool, thank you, Dr. Beers.
And if there are any questions now, this is a good time as well.
Anyone with any questions or comments on that? Okay.
Okay.
All right, so you should have an email already sent from, we, we should have received an email.
So that you will, you should have the, uh, as an attachment, uh, the form.
Great, thank you, Dr. Beers.
Yeah.
And any questions on that process or where we are in that process, just go ahead and get that to Dr. Beers and myself, and we'll, uh, we'll ferret those out. We'll move on to item eight, uh, our policies. We have four this evening. Uh, the first policy for review of, of revisions is policy IAA, instructional priority objectives. Hi, Ms. Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Knight is going to present this policy this evening.
Your mic is on. It's the right button.
Thank you. And good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I am here this evening to present two policy revisions to you for your consideration. I'll begin with policy IAA, our instructional priority objectives. This policy was reviewed to ensure alignment, of course, with our state and division expectations, and I'm happy to announce that IAA meets that standard. This policy was last revised into July two thousand and six, and due to that, we actually have very minimal changes, uh, specific to this, this policy. Those changes include the following, just a small grammatical revision. There was also an update of the title of the WJCC policy cross-reference IKF, and we added a WJCC cross-reference IGBC. Details outlined in this particular policy are made available to parents in multiple ways throughout WJCC, which include our WJCC website, via the annual back-to-school information, which is, which includes required forms for parents and required information for their review. Some of the details in this policy are also included in our program of studies. And additionally, our parents have the option of using, um, VIEW, our new e-signature program for notification and signing off on lots of this information. At this time, I will take questions related to IAA.
All right, I think IAA is pretty self-explanatory. Thank you, Ms. Knight. What do we have next?
We have IL testing programs. Policy IL was last revised in April of two thousand and sixteen. The revisions reflect the state's most current wording and expectations in alignment with our VSBA model policy. And specific changes to this policy include adding additional language from the VSBA model policy about the rights of parents and students regarding the disclosure of students' race or ethnicity on test. We also added an additional legal reference and a few wording changes made by, by our attorney. And we also added two additional cross-references, which included IAA, instructional priority objectives, and IKAA, final examinations, just to reflect an additional assessment administered by schools that have impacts that are linked to the SOLs. So again, very few changes, but at this time, I'm happy to entertain additional questions.
Few changes, but reasonable enough. Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, I, I just had a couple of questions, um, about the school, so can, can you just explain to me what, when it says school division personnel, however, may obtain information, which is disclosure of race and ethnicity from a student's permanent record and place the information on the test or assessment? So, so if a student chooses not to self-disclose race or ethnicity, someone's going to go in and do that for them?
Procedurally, no, that's not what happens. Um, this is the, the VSBA model guidance, but our procedures as a division do not include ever requiring students to enterfi- enter into any identifying information or demographic information or state level or local test. That information is actually pulled from our CIS or our student information system prior to students even beginning an assessment. And no one in our division really has the authority to make changes of that nature outside of our director of testing and assessment, and usually our registrars. The information when it comes to student demographic and ethnicity is actually, um, provided by parents during student registration and enrollment. And state and federal guidelines protect that information. So students are never asked to enter it, therefore there, it's never required to be altered.
I've, not understanding the policy then, I don't under.
I think to Ms. Ordigo's point and, and question, um, and Ms. Knight, you just said that nobody has the authority to do that, but this policy would give somebody the authority to do that.
Outside of our DDOT or, um, and I'm sorry, the Director of Testing and Administration. He, in our case, um, is one of the only people in our division who can input information of that nature. And again, our school registrars, but that information is entered at the beginning when parents enroll students in our school, in our school system. So when tests of a, a state or local nature are actually administered, that information related to demographics is already included. But I guess the state has just made provisions to say that students are not required to be the ones to provide that information.
Well, that's constitutionally protected. No one's required to, to, you can't compel someone to disclose that information. But if someone chooses not to disclose that information, this does say that divi- school division personnel can enter it into the, can go into the record and.
Choose a race for somebody on a, uh, I just, they can't randomly, so if in some case for a reason that I am not familiar with, someone would need to do that, the information that has to be entered has to be aligned with what's already reported to the state. They can't change a student's demographic information or make one up. It has to be aligned with what was already originally reported.
I would, I, I would think maybe, can we kick this back and go to an attorney? I mean, rather than trying, because I, I agree with Ms. Ordigo that this language does suggest that to the average reader, and so I, I just think maybe just kick it back.
We, we reviewed all this, um, Ms. Young and I, and we had the same exact questions. Um, basically, what I'm hearing is that state and local, the tests that are taken that for reporting purposes, they need to report out on all sorts of demographic results, and that's all coming from the student information system. So they're not asking students at any point in time to be able to, to self-identify anywhere on a test. It, to me, I think when we were going back and forth about this, it's a lot of, um, legalese language that is, that the VSBA recommended and our attorneys support, supported the model policy and just tweaked it a little bit.
Yeah, it just seems to, I would just, yeah, I would just like.
I can't support it.
It seems to me that would say, it should say, the student information system may contain information and connect it to the test. As the way this reads, yeah, I, I just, I would be just more comfortable.
I mean, that's, that's, that's fine.
Kick it back.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just don't, yeah.
But we did have the same, like, we went back and forth, that it was basically saying that we, we don't ask anyone, any student on, in a test to put any of that information down. It's just already in the system.
Right, but if you break this sentence down, it says school just, division personnel may place information on a test or assessment. I mean, that's what it says.
Yeah, so I'm not, I can't support it without understanding, I mean, I just, I can't support that.
I mean, we can.
Just kick it back to us. I think it's legitimate.
I think that's what we should do.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Thank you for, for our policy committee being willing to take this back, and thank you, Ms. Knight, for offering some explanation to it as well.
Of course, happy to help. Thank you.
Okay, excuse me. Eight-three, review, review of revisions to policy IICB, IICC, community resource persons, and school volunteers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ford is here to address this policy this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Herron. This evening I am presenting a recommendation to revise policy IICB, IICC, community resource persons, and school volunteers, which was adopted in two thousand and seventeen. As it is currently written, the policy states the importance of the participation of our parents and community members to the success of our schools. The policy's regulation and related form specifically address guest speakers and special programs. The language of the current policy is also included in three WJCC K policies, which were all adopted last November. Those policies are KA, School Community Relations, KAB, Family Engagement, and KKA, Volunteers and Partners. We recommend revising the language of IICB, IICC to specifically address guest speakers and special programs and the opportunities they offer to extend learning for students when they are carefully selected to support the instructional program. As in the current policy, speakers and special programs must be pre-approved by the principal. Further, we recommend in the revisions renaming the policy to IICB, Guest Speakers and Special Programs, removing the cross-reference to policy INE, Assemblies, which was retired in two thousand and seventeen, and adding the cross-references to the policy's regulation and form, which have also been revised, and adding cross-references to six related WJCC policies. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Ms. Ford? Yes, Ms. Ordigo?
Um, I'm just curious, uh, I, I have no issues with the, the new language. It's, it's basically just changing, creating a policy that's specifically targeted for guest speakers and special programs. Is, is there a reason that it needs to replace the other part of that?
The content that we are suggesting we remove?
Right.
Because that is repetitive with language that's already existing in three K policies that were just adopted last year, and the form and regulation for this policy was more specific to guest speakers and special programs. We don't have a policy for those, so we felt it was, it was necessary to address those two.
Right, so I understand the need for a policy on guest speakers and special programs. I, I was just curious because it, it didn't seem to be, it seems to be replacing a, a policy that was not a, you know, wasn't just updating a policy, or, or it seems to be replacing it about some, that was something completely different, and that is not, it's different language in the K, K policies, the KKA. Uh, it's not a, it's not a huge deal. I was just curious about the evolution because it seems like what, why, why are we replacing this instead of just creating a new policy on guest speakers?
Making the language more aligned to the regulation and the form that had been developed, which seemed out of sync with the language of the original IICB. which seemed out of sync with the language of the original IICB.
Any other questions for Ms. Ford? Yes, Ms. Young?
I was just going to say, one of the things that, going back into this, I think the language, the original language is more robust. I would like, the, I hate to make work for us, but I'd like to make the, have the policy committee take a look at that original language. And I'm trying to get there. This thing just keeps bouncing all over the place. But I'd like us to go back and look at the language, and I think it's KKA or KAB. It's one of those where it talks about parents' participation. I'd like to take a little bit, take a look at the two policies and see if we can incorporate some of the language from that policy that we're shutting down and putting it in that K policy because I think it's stronger language and, and, I mean, it's, I think it addresses the idea that parents are, need to be involved in the school a little bit better.
So, so what you're saying, I mean, because what, I think that's, you're asking to bring back KAB?
Yes.
Okay, rather than, I mean, because if you're okay with the verbiage that we have in IICB, then we move ahead with that, but then you request that we look at the language in the original IICB slash IICC that's been struck out in red and see if some of that language, compare it to KAB, the verbiage in KAB, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, so then, so then, Ms. Young, what do you want to do with this particular, with-
I think the way it stands is good.
Okay.
I just would like to take some of that language that's in that paragraph that's been struck out and, and maybe incorporate some of that language into our other policy, the other K policy.
You know, all this time, I thought we had worn out our policy committee and they're looking for more work.
I wasn't looking for more work, believe me, but when I, but when I went back and, and looked at it, I think it doesn't say quite the same thing.
Yeah, no, thank you.
So, so what I'm hearing, again, just to confirm, is that we, we move ahead with this one unless there's any issues with it. But who do we have to, do we go to you, Dr. Heron, to say that we bring KAB for review?
Absolutely. We'll put it on the rotation list so that it comes back, and then we can bring this at the same time and make sure some of the language is incorporated in that policy. So we can put it in our rotation of policies to come back to the Board Center.
To both policies?
Just one.
Just one.
This one's good, I think.
This one's good. Okay, great. This one's good. Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ford. Eight oh four, review of revisions to policy BCF, Advisory Committees to the Board. Oh, okay. Ms. Hummel or Ms. Young? Did you want to lead out on this one? I see Dr. or Mr. Keever coming up.
Let's let Dr. or Mr. Keever talk about this.
Calendar man.
Let me change the calendar man hat.
Mr. Calendar man.
This policy is one in the B section because it is per view of the Board. The, there has been a request, and part of this is spelled out for the Board on the under administrative content, but hadn't been reviewed since two thousand and sixteen. The revisions that are being made are aligned to BCF and BCE within the VSBA model policies. We've attempted to streamline and shift the content to make it more understandable. Some of our committees have asked for further clarification on specific responsibilities and roles. And then, based on some information that we received from the attorney relative to other committees that may need to be listed, we included those as well. So the, the policy is an attempt to, to really lay out what school board committees are about and also create that process whereby the committees know what the expectations are.
Thank you, Mr. Keever.
Sure.
Any questions related to the Green Line additions? There's a lot.
There's a lot of additions to that one.
But not seeing any? Thank you, Mr. Keever. I think perhaps we have a consent agenda that we can bring for our next meeting. We're looking at not including policy IL, but perhaps policy IAA, policy IICB, and policy BCF, items one, three, and four for our consent agenda. Is that looking good for everybody? Okay, great. We'll move on to our action items. If I can have a motion to approve the personal actions this evening as presented?
Mr. Chair, I moved that we approve the personal actions as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Hunley?
Aye.
Ms. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Item nine point two, approval of release from compulsory attendance for case number R two 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 three dash zero five. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I have moved that we approve the release from compulsory attendance, case number RR two 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 three dash oh five.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel, and Ms. Robinson.
Ms. Ordigo?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Finally, item nine point three, approval of revisions to the twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the revisions of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school calendar as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Any discussion, any further discussion on this? Okay, Ms. Robinson.
Ms. Ordigo? Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye, thank you all. If we move on to our board member comments, we'll start with Ms. Hummel, if that's okay?
I, I don't have any comments.
Okay, Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to wish our superintendent a happy birthday.
Oh, yes.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, for celebrating it so well and making it special. And then also, I wanted to thank the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation for hosting an event in honor of local educators. It was a remarkable evening, and I think all of the educators who were able to attend felt incredibly honored, and Colonial Williamsburg pulled out all the stops in making sure that not only did our educators have good food and drink, but also got to visit the museums and also learn about all of the resources Colonial Williamsburg has available to assist teachers and students in our community. So it's a really, you know, Colonial Williamsburg is uniquely and directly responsible for our quality of life in this community, and it's just, it was wonderful that they created such a magical evening, so I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Young?
Yes, I want to thank the people that came tonight, Ms. Walter's group, and the counseling department and all of their hard work. And actually, I thought that was probably one of the most enjoyable presentations for that. Actually, I enjoyed that. And, and congratulations, Dr. Heron, you made it another year.
It's a good thing.
It is a good thing. And then, as a result of a comment that was made at a school board meeting a few weeks ago, I've been doing a lot of thinking about book banning. And one of the things that has been pointed out to me, I'm not going to scare you, I promise, is that in the Library of Congress, I don't know if you know this, there's a hundred and seventy-three million books. A hundred and seventy-three million. Every school library cannot accommodate that. I mean, that would be a whole couple of buildings, probably, of our, maybe, maybe all of them. And so, one of the things that I think is important to remember is that when it comes to this two books, that the books need to be, have banned, and I think are selected because we're teaching children, then they should, they are, they should be selected for age appropriateness and subject appropriateness. And I think that is what is happening in school libraries, and because of the size of our school libraries, it has to be limited. So we ban many books, probably, probably, almost probably a hundred and seventy-two million, nine hundred and eighty thousand books from our library because we can't accommodate them all. And I personally am not for banning any book, but I do believe that there is age-appropriate material and subject-appropriate material for students, and they are students. And they are the board's responsibility to make sure that those things are happening, and that's all I have to say about it. I didn't scare you too badly, did I?
You are perfectly well within your right to say whatever you want to say, Michelle. Thank you, Michelle.
Oh, maybe, can I?
Oh, you're done. You're done. Ms. Ordigo?
Thank you. I too want to wish Dr. Heron a very happy birthday. I hope you have some very near-future plans that are more fun than this to celebrate. I want to thank all the staff for the presentations tonight. This, this felt like it was a lot tonight. Maybe the last few weeks have been lighter, but this was, was a lot to digest as a school board member, so I know that was a lot of hours and hours that went into preparing it and presenting it. So, thank you for that, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Ms. Hunley?
I'd like to echo, the CW event was awesome, and what really resonated with me is the people that put it on really want to work with teachers and let them know all of the things they can offer our school division. So, and I hope they do it again because there was a lot of kudos from the teachers. Also, I was able to go to Warhills College Fair, and there were a lot of people there, but I was there to help just get out the word about scholarships. I was amazed at how many freshmen and sophomores it were. It's like I'm saying, are you a senior? What schools are you looking at? And they're like, I'm a freshman. So kudos to the parents that are heads up getting kids ready for looking at colleges. And then, went to the disability awareness trick-or-treat, which was down near James River School. But that was just amazing. There were twenty vendors, and Parks and Rec was there, CDR, Our Bright Beginnings. The kids were in costumes, and the parents are getting lots of great information of how to help their children. And then, I never had been to Matthew Whaley's trick-or-treat, I mean, their parade ever in all these years I've been here. So I went, and every class came out. It was, it was a thirteen-minute parade, and the kids were so excited. And that reminds me, thank you to all the teachers that showed up today, the day after Halloween, when everybody got in late and sugared up. I remember opening those lunchboxes and saying, take that out, take, put it in your backpack. You're not having that Reese's cup. That is not your snack. So, thank you to the teachers that hung in there, that still have to hang in there the rest of this week. I'm excited about the bonus. So, I know, I just want to say, and I, I know everybody on my board, not my board, the board, believes that. Definitely, teachers work hard. We are so glad you stayed. I mean, we know the grass looks greener. We know there's six other divisions that are offering this, that, and the other. And we know that you didn't go because you like living here, you like working here. So we thank you that you stayed. We hope you continue to stay, and your check, your bonus check is in the mail.
Dr. Beers?
First of all, I, I was really interested in seeing the farm stand at CVB. I, I think I might have to stop by and check out the tower because I have tried to grow lettuce like that. I have never, I, I, I wanted to look, I gotta get there. And, and, I mean, it's really, and then the kids faked it by letting you think that they really liked your face. I realize that's right. I know, I know. Everybody loves lettuce. But anyway, I am going to stop by and check that out. I want to thank, it goes without saying, to all our hard-working staff. So many things are going on, some of which we know about, some of which we don't. I was very, and I was very much impressed with the presentation about the program of studies tonight. And, and I, I was actually half joking, but also half serious. There's a lot of stuff being offered in high schools now that weren't being offered when I was going to high school. And it's really remarkable to see how a school system keeps up and continues to go forward. And I, I was very impressed. And the only thing I will say about our superintendent, and I congratulate her for her birthday, is that she has always been dead-on, and only she will know what I mean by that.
All right. I submit a third SBQ to figure that one.
I'm not sure the staff can actually answer that one.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. I, I've had the opportunity to visit schools as a parent more often than I have in the last two weeks. And so I just want to say from my heart and from our family's perspective, thank you to some wonderful teachers that we have in this school division. So I'll leave that alone. Happy birthday to you, Dr. Heron. And I've heard a lot about the upcoming Veterans Day, excuse me, really emotional, Veterans Day celebration at Stone House Elementary, so put me down for that, too. I'll be there.
It's one not to be missed.
Yeah. Okay. Upcoming events, November fourth, New Horizons Tour at the Regional Education Center Newport Academy. I think I said that wrong last time, too. Newport Academy and Newport News, November fourth at twelve-thirty. Policy Committee Meeting, November fourth, virtually at three fifteen PM. School Liaison Committee Meeting, November ninth at eight AM, Central Office, Room three oh nine. And then, Policy Committee Meeting, November fifteenth at eight thirty AM, Room one oh eight, here at the Central Office. And then, VSBA Annual Conference, that my daytime still doesn't realize I'm going to be awake to. I kind of fear that one out. November sixteenth through the eighteenth, VSBA Annual Convention here in Williamsburg at the Lodge. Upcoming meetings, closed session and public hearing on Dr. Heron's CIP recommendation, November fifteenth, six and six thirty respectively. And then, on the fifteenth, our regular meeting in the James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. Joint meeting on December second at nine AM at the REC Center with our funding partners to discuss our CIP recommendation. And then, closed session and work session on December sixth at four and four thirty, here at the Annex. Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned. If I'm getting eyes on me like I'm missing something, no, we're adjourned.